Got the super sensitive microphone. Good morning. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. Before I get into my introductory remarks, I'd just like to introduce myself. I'm Stan Kumorek. I'll be your chair this morning. On my, I'd like to introduce my fellow panel members as well. On my far left, Dominic Gully. On my left, Laura Alderson. On my right, Rick Ross. And on my far right, Bill Dalton. I'd also like to introduce Barbara Bertozic, our manager and deputy secretary treasurer, and Barbara's staff in front of us. Okay, the Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permissions to extend or alter lawful or non-conforming uses, and consents to sever property to create new lots. I'd like to do a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anashnabi, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Windat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Intuit, and Matisse people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Our procedure today, the Committee of Adjustment hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating by video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. All other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with a written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use ShareScreen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. Decisions of the committee. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address as the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government has amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal the Committee of Adjustments. And now only at the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and specified persons and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the committee. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision and bottom of the decision of the committee. Each item will be called in order as listed in the agenda. When the application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise a chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are at or reaching that five-minute mark. Any presentation or other materials, as I had mentioned earlier, should have been submitted in advance, as staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing today. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make their presentation. Please note that committee, again, may not make revisions today. The committee may decide to defer the application if it is substantially revised to ensure the revisions on the application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Secondly, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will then be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on the speakers here in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has the opportunity to rebut, but only those issues that were raised by the previous speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Okay, starting on the top of the agenda, our first item is the declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest by staff or committee members for any of these items? Nope, okay. Minutes of the previous meeting. So we had a meeting on July the tenth. I was not there, so I'm looking for a motion from someone who was to confirm those minutes.
I can move approval of those minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. All in favor? Okay, the minutes are approved. Madam Secretary Treasurer, I'm assuming we have no files to be closed? Okay, and we do have some deferral requests, so if we could deal with those before we get to the main agenda.
Yes, item seven is the first one. It's, you don't have it in your package, but I believe the applicant will be asking for a deferral.
Okay, let's speak to that applicant on that issue. Seven. Salvatore Creamy.
Good morning through you, Mr. Chair and Committee Members.
Good morning, sir. We have some inconsistencies on the drawings versus actual, or not sure what the issue is. Is that correct?
Correct. Through the diligent work of the application technician, it was identified that the site plan does not match what was actually built. So this is an as-built application coming in after the fact to permit a front yard parking space. The issue here is the driveway was wide and more. The driveway maintained the dimensions on the site plan, but a walkway was added in front of the porch and around the house, which interferes with the landscaping requirement at the front yard. So we're going in for a revised notice to obtain the additional variance that came up now, part of this identification. And once we get that, we'll request a reschedule. But first, we're requesting this deferral to identify what the actual variance is for soft yard landscaping.
Understood. Thank you. I'm assuming there are no speakers on this item?
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll take it to committee for a vote.
If I could just let the applicant know, please be clear when you resubmit, because the photos that you submitted to file show three cars parked when there's only supposed to be two. That's what your request is in your application. And then I believe if you do a Google Earth search, it actually shows four cars. So it does appear that four could park there. I know you've said one is, part of that is just a walkway. But please make sure that your plans are accurate as to what is truly being proposed, because the committee could tie you to those plans.
Just a comment, I believe they call that a parking lot. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if it is a walkway, there may be a different treatment to the surface, but anyway. Okay, I think we're done with the comments. I'm looking, I'm looking for a motion.
Chair, I believe that the request for a deferral is fair, and I move that the deferral be granted in order for the representative to clearly identify variances, particularly with respect to soft landscaping in the front yard.
Okay, thank you, Dominic.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Laura. All in favor? Okay, the item is deferred. And the next item. I believe the applicant is requesting a deferral for item twelve. Yep. Okay, so the speaker for item twelve, I can find my list. Adam? Thomas, do we have Adam on the line?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. You're looking to defer this application?
Yes.
Okay, any rationale for that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Committee Members, I submitted a formal deferral request and the application technician added to the folder. There's been a bylaw revision passed by council recently that affects this proposal, so we need some time to confer with Toronto buildings on how the applicable zoning should be revised.
Okay, thank you. And we have one speaker listed?
Yes, they're related to the decision. So Chow, you can come to the podium, please.
Okay, so just. So before you start, just want to get your name and address, please. No. So while we're waiting to get that technical issue straightened out, I just want to clarify, the applicant is asking for a deferral. So we're not going to look at the item, we just wanted, the merits of the item. We just want to get your opinion on whether you're okay with deferring it. No, no, I don't want to get into the issues. I just want to, I just want your opinion on whether you're okay with us deferring this for another time. So we won't even have to deal with it today. Sorry? No, 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 no. They were kidding about that. No, the bylaws are changing, so the variances may change. So therefore, the applicant wants to postpone their hearing date. Yeah, not do it today. So we just want to know whether you're okay with that.
Sorry, what was your name and address? Thank you.
In the meantime, we'll try to get the mic fixed. Thanks. Okay, thanks. Okay, so Committee Members, we have a request for a deferral for item twelve, A, B, and C. Looking for a motion.
So I'll make a motion to defer the application, the request of the applicant.
It's on this side.
All right. I'll make a motion to defer the application, the request of the applicant, so he has an opportunity to revise the variances.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Seconder? Thank you, Bill. All in favor? The item is deferred. Yep. Come by here and just speak here. Okay, well done. Thank you. Just, yeah, let's do a test. Perfect. Short people have to stand on a telephone book. I, I think we're good, guys. Okay, thank you. I don't think there are any other deferrals. Madam Secretary Treasurer, no more deferrals, right? Oh, fourteen. Okay. Mr. Binkowski. Jonathan, are you there?
Jonathan?
Yes, I'm here.
I, I know you're not requesting a deferral, but we have a potential issue here because the lot that you're proposing to be produced or to be severed has no frontage.
Mr. Chair, it doesn't, it doesn't. And, and. I, I, I live, since I've spoken with staff this morning, I've been trying to figure out how really this was missed by everybody on multiple, multiple occasions, and I'm not absolving myself from that either.
And I thought we had this discussion on the original hearing.
We did not. No, the original deferral was, was for conservation, ravine and natural features.
Okay, okay.
And which we, which we've all dealt with by, by amending the proposed lot at part four. What, see, the, the issue is Yorkley Avenue does extend north of part three as an actual street in the road classification map.
Yep.
So in essence, one of the two lots, as it stands now, does not have a frontage.
But why do you have a part three and part four? Like, why are they even two separate parts?
They're historic easements and, and right-of-ways that have been there since the nineteen seventies.
So, okay.
It's a very, very unique situation, Mr. Chair. I, I, you know, invariably, what I think is going to have to happen is part one is going to have to extend through parts two, because the, the, the subject owner owns part two and part three. So this property, as it sits today, is, is essentially part one, part two, and part three. The, the, the idea was to sever off, yeah, the historic lot today is part one, part two, and part three. The proposal is to sever off part four.
I, I want to pull up the draft art plan so I can just, for visual.
If we could zoom out a bit.
I, I got it.
Yes. So the historic lot today is, is basically, if you take out part four, it would just be part one's, part two, and part three, with part four forming a part of part one.
Okay, so you're saying that parts two and three currently exist as separate parts?
Correct, correct, but owned by, by the owner of part one.
Okay.
It's one contiguous lot.
So maybe your application should be a lot combining and then severing.
I think what has to happen is part one is going to have to extend to Yorkley Avenue, which exists to the north of part three, and then part four is going to have to take the other, the other portions of it.
Yeah.
Is, is what I think is going to have to happen.
Yeah, like, so, so you, you're looking at a little bit of a different.
Correct.
Severance here. And just while I've got you, just out of curiosity's sake, why is part four terminate where it does? Why doesn't it come all the way down to?
So when we, when we visited the property with RNFP and, and urban forestry, the drip line of some of the trees extends into that, and RNFP is not supportive of a severance within a drip line. So that's essentially the end of the drip line of the trees that are located to the south.
Really?
Yes. I was not aware of that also, Mr. Chair.
Like, it just, like, when, when you look at it on, on, on a plan, it just looks like a really awkward severance.
It, and, and also what it has done is it has eliminated the garden suite, because we don't, then don't have the, the area for the garden suite at the rear. So, so yes, so RNFP does not support severances within a drip line, regardless of if there is no harm to the trees itself.
Yeah, and you wouldn't have the rear yard variance and, you know, all, anyway.
Correct. But yes, I, 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 I do, I do thank, you know, the Deputy Secretary Treasurer for finding this out today. I, I should have noticed this earlier in, in my work, and it, it should have been flagged on the zoning notice ultimately also, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, so in any case, we can't resolve this today. All we can do is defer it.
Correct.
And we now have a detailed explanation of why we're deferring.
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There were other speakers on this one? Just trying to find my speakers list. Yeah. Okay, yeah, come on up, come on up, come on up.
I also wanted to ask a question of the, of the applicant.
Sure.
Which is whether he's seen the letter from the consultant that we got in our additional materials.
I think the consultant's here.
Are you the consultant that wrote that?
I am, yes.
Okay.
My name is Alan Ramsey, and I'm a planning consultant retained by some of the neighbors, the abiding neighbors to the east and west and some to the north.
Welcome.
And just in terms, in terms of the deferral request, my client would certainly support a deferral to street note what's actually required. Just, I'll just put my two, two cents worth. It was my impression that parts one and two, or the two parts at the top.
Three and two.
Three and two were actually to convey easements to permit access, they're not separate parcels. They're just simply parts on a plan to permit access across those, those properties.
And can you state publicly which, because your letter doesn't indicate which properties you're representing, which it should.
It does. Footnote one on page one of, of, of the letter.
I know, but I'm asking you to state it at the public hearing.
Sure. So it's, the property, it's at eighty-nine, eighty-three, eighty-one, and some other.
That's good enough.
Off the jack.
We've got a few.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so that answers some of the confusing questions we had.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll take it back to committee for a motion.
Chair, I had a question of the Secretary Treasurer for me.
Sure.
Is there any chance?
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. So we have two more people registered.
Oh, okay.
To speak. So we have an Anna.
I didn't get to my list, that's why. Okay, hold on.
So Anna DePede? Is she present? No? Okay.
Okay.
Anna Michael-Belly?
Okay, I, I, I suspected as much, but okay, thank you. No, they don't need to speak. Okay. So back to committee again.
Chair, I had a question of Secretary Treasurer. If this can be resolved by the next hearing date, is it feasible in terms of notice to get it back on the agenda, or?
No, because the applicant has to submit a revised art plan. They have to get new zoning reviews, and we have to recirculate.
So that would take four weeks?
Much more.
More.
Thank you.
Okay, is anyone ready for a motion?
Yeah, so with that, I'd like to move a motion for a deferral as the application has some further due diligence to do.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Seconder? Thank you, Mr. Ross. All in favor? Okay, the item is deferred.
Laura? Were you in favor? Yep, okay. And just to clarify, the reason for deferral was to clarify the lot frontage requirements and amend the applications accordingly.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay. So barring any further technical issues, I think we're ready to start the top of the agenda. So item one is eleven thirty-sixth Street. This is an application to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage and a deck in the rear yard. There are three, three variances being requested. Forestry is requesting condition one. We have letters of objection, and we have, I guess, what I would call competing arborist reports from the applicant and from. from the applicant and from the neighbors, or from L-N-B-A. Marco? Is online, I'm assuming? Mr.?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Marco Razolini from Socorro Design Inc., twenty Stave Bank Road, Unit 202, Mississauga.
Good morning, sir. If you could grace us with your full presentation?
Sure, if we can bring up the presentation that I submitted. Great. If we could go to page two. All right, so on this page, you can see the subject site is located four houses up on the right side of thirty-sixth Street from the bend of Lake Promenade. Lake Promenade is the street that's running parallel with the lake, or the bottom of the screen here. Directly behind the subject site, to the right on this image, is a parking lot for a three-story multiplex which fronts onto Lake Promenade. To the north is fifteen thirty-sixth Street. There's a small rectangular lot that's behind fifteen, to the right of fifteen in this image, and to the north of the parking lot. In that rectangular area is where Titan, the tree that the neighbors are concerned with, is located. It was inaccurately shown on our site plan. It was mislocated by the surveyor that carried over to the arborist report. Our arborist did go out this week to accurately locate that tree. We submitted a new site plan and arborist showing that the, so showing the accurate location of Titan, as well as the double TPZ. And the proposal is clear of that double tree protection zone. The arborist also spoke with a supervisor from forestry this week who confirmed that the tree Titan technically doesn't have a TPZ. The double TPZ is only required in RNFP-regulated areas. However, in any case, we're still outside of that double tree protection zone. If there was a way to bring up the revised arborist report that was submitted this week, I think it would be helpful for everyone to review. That can happen at the end of this presentation, if that's possible. The other thing that's notable on this page is directly across the street, there's a large home that's fairly new. That house was approved by the committee with a building length and depth of over twenty meters. It's the house that backs onto the lake. If we continue to the next page, there is 3D context on the next slide. It shows the apartment that fronts onto Lake Promenade on the right. You can see the parking lot that's behind that apartment, behind our site. And then Titan is to the top left of the parking lot, and I guess top right of the subject site. So we had previously shown it closer to the houses. It's in fact beyond the rear property line of those houses. We could go to the next slide. Next slide shows the front as it exists. And then the following slide is the site plan, which I'll speak to in more detail. So as background, so, I guess before I get into that, this image here, the front of the house is on the left side. The back is on the right side. There is Titan, shown inaccurately toward the top right of this page. It's actually further to the right. This was submitted prior to the coordination with, well, prior to the opposition from the neighbors and coordination with the arborist. But what I want to highlight is, we had previously submitted the application with the house pulled up to the front yard setback. With that, it was highly unlikely that that front tree shown in the green area would be able to survive the proposed work. We spoke with forestry, we redesigned the house, we pushed the house back away from the front yard setback. Were able to save that front tree. And through that redesign, it sort of resulted in this extended building length and depth variances that we're seeking approval for today. Just to clarify, I know we all know the maximum building length is seventeen meters, taken from the front wall. Maximum building length, sorry, depth, is nineteen meters, taken from the front yard setback. Both of those end up in the blue dashed line area. We moved the house back two meters in order to save that front tree. And what that resulted in is the rear covered porch being located beyond the maximum building length and depth. That dark blue shaded area is the porch, and the area below it is for living space. And that's where the proposed building length and depth is taken to. It's only one story. It's only the covered porch. There's a small portion that is also over the building length and set, building length and depth on the second level, which we can see if we go to the next slide, there's an elevation that shows most of that, most of that additional building length and depth is in the basement, below grade. Small portion being on the second floor. The other thing I wanted to note, sorry, if we go back to the previous page, I know I have fifteen seconds left here, is the tan boxes on this visual represent the existing built form in the neighborhood. Smaller houses up toward the street, there is a two-car detached garage, that's single-story, right at the back of their lot, that's sort of in line with where our porch is located. And this is just to show that there's already obstructed views through that, through that rear yard. The, the porch that we're proposing extends to a similar distance.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off there.
Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
We'll, we'll, we'll throw, I'm gonna throw in some questions, so. Just, first off, we are aware of an updated arborist report, which we have not seen. And under the rules that we go by, I'm assuming we can't see that, or I just want to get Secretary Treasurer's input in that? We don't have access to it, okay. So I guess my question before we go any further is that if you feel that that is very germane to your presentation, would you wish a deferral so that we can see that at a future meeting?
I, I, I would maybe leave that up to your discretion as well. The, the site context map that I had noted does show that the tree is further back in the lot than where it's shown on the site plan and the original arborist report. The double TPZ is not something that's actually in place by regulation. So even in the inaccurate location shown here, we're still outside of it.
We, we, we kind of get that, but I, I, I just wanted to give you that choice before we proceed any further. Because I don't think it's going to be fair for everyone else to speak, and then we so i- if you want that option, you take it now. If not, we go forward.
Let's proceed.
Okay, thank you. So let's go to the speaker's list. Andy Choles is the first speaker I have listed.
Good morning. My name is Andy Choles. I live at twelve Jasmine Avenue, Long Branch, quite a few blocks east of the property at eleven thirty-sixth Street. I'm a board member of the Long Branch Neighborhood Association. We have a mission statement at the LBNA to protect, celebrate, enhance the neighborhood of the, of the Village of Long Branch. I'm here to speak to, in opposition of this application, this planned build and building length and depth are excessive. Reading the applicant's arborist reports would seem that the applicant will be clearing most of the trees from the lot. City-owned trees only receive a reprieve in the amended report, and the planned build is so long and deep that the lot back corner of the home will be in the tree protection zone of the heritage tree located in the neighbor's yard. Official plan states that development in established neighborhoods will respect and reinforce the existing physical character of each geographical neighborhood, including in particular, Part G, prevailing patterns of rear and side yard setbacks and landscaped open space. Currently, this application proposes the following, which are contrary to this policy. The new dwelling will be twenty point zero four meters, where the permitted length is seventeen. The new building will have a maximum depth of twenty-one point seven seven meters, where nineteen meters is permitted. Proposed length and depth of the home is a press, is precedent-setting this neighborhood. The LBNA has looked at decisions in the immediate context and the geographical neighborhood from Lake Promenade, north, to the rear property lines of Lake Shore Boulevard West, thirty-sixth Street, to thirty-ninth Street, rear property lines on the west. Of all the bylaw compliant lots, we found no approvals for such a significant length and depth variance in the immediate or broader context. In her letter, I should have mentioned that at the beginning, Ms. Mercado listed fifteen decisions for new builds on bylaw compliant lots in the area. None of these applications have variances for excessive building length or building depth. It was a similar story when it came to additions to homes in the same area. No variances for building length or depth, not one. The illustration on page two of Ms. Mercado's letter illustrates the extent of the excessive depth, the building and building length this planned build would be. I would just note that the house at the bottom of the illustration faces onto Lake Promenade, so the configuration of the lot is quite different. This application does not respect the prevailing setbacks in the immediate or broader area. Ms. Mercado mentions the issue of flooding in older neighborhoods served by combined sewer systems, a key factor in contributing to flooding during heavy rain and part of the lived experience in Long Branch. She mentions the comments made by Counselor Amber Morley in the city's multiplex monitoring report. This home is not billed as a multiplex, although there appears to be an option for occupancy by more than one group of people. The comments are worthy of consideration since the basement of this home is longer than the upper floors. This adds to the reduction of water permeable services and poses an increased risk of flooding. This longer basement or iceberg home design also penetrates the tree protection required for the heritage tree located in the neighbor's yard. There are three arborist reports included in this file, two filed by the applicant Wellwind Consulting dated September twenty-seventh, and then an amended report on June the fifth, while all private trees on this lot are slated for removal in both reports due to site plan conflict. The city tree fares a little better in the amended report. They are not destroyed, but the Persian walnut, which is located beside the driveway, I believe, will be injured in this bill. This injury of a city tree is concerning. The private trees are to be destroyed, and all seem to be fruit trees that may never reach the critical thirty, thirty centimeters diameter height, diameter breast height. However, all trees are important. Without small trees, you'll never have any large trees. Without large trees, you won't have the tree canopy that is part of our Long Branch neighborhood. On the subject of large trees, I refer to the third report, Conan Master, dated July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, which is part of the letter of objection from the neighbor at fifteen thirty-sixth Street. This report gives information on the heritage tree locally known as Titan, a red oak located in the backyard of number fifteen thirty-sixth Street. It is noted in all the reports that this tree must be preserved. On that point, we all agree. Only this third Conan Master report correctly gives the thickness of the trunk or diameter breast height as one hundred and fifty-seven centimeters. The report states the diameter breast height measured on July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five was one hundred and fifty-seven centimeters. Therefore, the minimum heritage tree protection zone should be larger and amended to at least eighteen point eight four meters, putting proposed construction at eleven thirty-sixth Street well within the southwest portion of the minimum heritage tree protection of this tree. Again, the length and depth of the planned build is problematic. The two Wellwind reports provided by the applicant incorrectly estimate Titan's trunk at only one hundred and twenty centimeters and give a TPZ zone of only seven point two meters. It is doubtful if urban forestry even visited the site of this application. The chart from forestry is rather disappointing, listing a number of applications to be heard at today's hearing, and includes the usual conditions that must be met should a removal be desired. All of the arborist reports state that forestry has no jurisdiction issuing a permit to remove or interpet heritage tree. Unlike the, Long Branch already embodies the spirit of Yee-Hon Initiative with a mix of permitted build forms and well-integrated into community. In short, the Long Branch has been doing its part and gentle density increase since eighteen seventy-seven, eighteen eighty-seven.
Andy, could I get you to wrap up, please?
Yeah. This plan calls for numerous trees to be removed from this lot and a heritage tree to be threatened. I would respectfully ask the panel to refuse this application today. Thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned that there are no examples of that house length in the immediate context. How, how do you reply to number three oh three, Lake Promenade, that the applicant pointed out, which is directly across the street?
I would have to look that up on the AIC. The, the information I received from Christine Mercado did, did not include that. I will go and check what, what the length and depth is for that in the future. Possibly the immediate context is usually houses on the same side of the street, and one block in the next. I, I can't account for that three oh three.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No?
Sir, I had, I had one question. Thank you for your presentation. You started your presentation with the issue of performance standards, as far as Long Branch is concerned. One of the things that stood out at the beginning of your presentation with side yard issues are any of the side yard requirement being compromised in this case, other than the length and depth of the building? Any side yard issues, any height issues, any coverage issue, any GF, GFA, FSI issues?
Again, looking at the, the report, the public hearing notice, the variances listed there are for length and depth, and we usually stick with what's on the, the report, rather than, you know, going on to other things that aren't, aren't included there. There usually wasted time to do that.
Okay, so you, you do agree that there are no other performance standards that are being requested, variances for?
According to the report, no.
Okay.
There's, there's a driveway.
Thank you. The only reason I'm asking you is because you, you made a point of mentioning the fact that side yard wasn't, wasn't, was important, and I was hoping
There's no side yard variances being requested.
There are no side yard variances. You agree with that?
No, I, I, again, we stick with what's on the, the report and base our arguments on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No? Next speaker then, Alexander Donald? Mr. Donald?
Yes, it's Alexander Donald from thirty-four thirty-sixth Street, quite literally just down the road. Also mentioning, I'm a director of the Ontario Wildlife Rescue. We work with the Ministry of Natural Resources, Minister's Office, Deputy Minister's Office Assistant Deputy Minister of Regional Operations, and the head of wildlife policy for the Ministry of Natural Resources. We work on the frontline in regards to injured orphaned wild animals across Ontario. The question of the possible damage or injury to the large red oak, the Titan designated, or Titan designated tree, the possible divast, devastating impact of injury or killing of this tree will have on the local wildlife. A tree of this magnitude supports an entire ecosystem. Small mammals, squirrels, raccoons, indirectly rabbits, groundhogs, coyotes, songbirds, and birds of prey. Also, even the insects that are on this tree support the ecosystem. If this massive tree is injured or destroyed, the ripple effect will, will be felt by surrounding neighbors as displaced wildlife moves out to find a new home. Also, I think it's extremely important, because this is an old-growth tree, and in particularly where it is located. Toronto is on one of the five major migratory routes in North America. In particular, birds migrate along Lake Ontario. This proper proposed property and the tree is very, very close to the lake. If this tree dies or is destroyed, it will have a major impact in regards to migratory. If birds in particular have to go to lower trees, bushes, that sort of thing, their chances of surviving is significantly reduced. Also, looking in the official plan on pages one, two, it talks about the support of biodiversity. Policy three point four talks about sustaining the natural ecosystem, support biodiversity in the city, migratory species, additional habitats provided by built. On pages three dash thirty-seven, talks about the natural ecosystem. On page three point three nine, biodiversity. Backyards also play an important role in our urban ecosystem. Toronto biodiversity strategy talks about an effect, concern about removal of the original forest, which this definitely fits into. It goes through various things. Basically, Toronto, actually in particular, City of Toronto supports the existence of birds, and in particular, migratory birds, which this could have an effect on. The vast impact of injuring the red oak tree, Titan, the heritage tree, will have on local wildlife. Injury removal of a mini biodiversity ecosystem does not maintain the general intent and purpose of the official plan. Policy three point foo, three point four in the biodiversity policies. Or, but also, I think it was extremely but also I think what's extremely important is if we lose this tree, it cannot be replaced within our lifetime. And that section of Long Branch has one of the major, um, old growth, uh, areas in Toronto. If this tree is allowed to die, it basically sets a precedent for more trees being taken down. And that, uh, this is sort of on the southern area of the, if you're gonna call it the old growth, um, forest that runs up thirty or between thirty sixth street and thirty seventh street. So basically, you're gonna be killing off the bottom end of this old growth forest. That's my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Donald. Um, any questions? No? Okay. Uh, our next speaker, I believe, is Louise Naguchi. And Louise is, um, the next door neighbor.
Yes.
Number, at number fifteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I, uh, I'm Louise Naguchi and Pat Rice, uh, my husband, who also lives here, is also gonna speak a little bit within my five minutes. Okay, so the, um, the planned structure will extend much further into the yard than the house currently on the property, and it's much further into the yard than the houses on both sides. If built, it would be the largest house on thirty sixth street, and we are concerned that it will set a precedent for our neighborhood due to its increased size. Additionally, we feel that the new build will, uh, impact our quality of life because it will shade our house and obscure views of the lake from two windows on the south side of our home. Part of the reason for purchasing our home was that it had views of the lake, um, which we value and enjoy to this day, and I'm sure that it would, um, uh, impact our, uh, our, our, uh, quality of life. I'm not sure if the slides are showing, are they? That I sent in my materials? Um, I did send in materials for the presentation. Um, anyhow, um, yes.
Are these, okay.
Yes, yes, sorry. Okay, so it was, um, so the larger house will shade, also shade the driveway where we, uh, plant vegetables in our containers every summer. For this, these reasons, we feel that the new build would negatively affect our quality of life and possibly the value of our home. So the next slide, please, uh, Pat?
Hi, uh, I'm Patrick Rice, and I've lived at fifteen thirty sixth street with my wife Louise Naguchi for the last twenty seven years. Um, the proposed plan shows the basement entrance stairway is located two feet, four inches away from our garage. However, the excavation will likely extend right up to the, the side wall of the wooden garage. An excavation this close has the potential to undermine the structural integrity of the garage and possibly cause a collapse. The snow blower, lawn mowers, kayaks, et cetera, can be replaced, but Louise's sculptures stored there are not replaceable. The A G O has been exhibiting three of her works from their collection for the past few months. So a collapse of this garage would be much more than a monetary loss. In conclusion, we'd like to know if the, the application, if, the way it is passed, uh, what sort of steps will be taken to shore up the side of the garage to prevent, uh, this collapse? Thank you.
Um, so the next slide, please. Our final concern is how this larger house will affect the heritage tree in our yard. The tree is over two hundred years old, um, and the, the neighborhood has nicknamed it Titan. We have been informed that it is the largest tree in the area, so high that bald eagles and hawks have been spotted on its upper branches. And I just wanted you to note that behind the tree, uh, the neighbor behind us has planned, has, um, put some structures that, um, also impede on the root system, but to the right of it, um,
Sure.
is, uh, could you go to the next, oh, um, we'll see it late, later, but the next slide will be a, a photograph of the parking lot. This is an image of some of the events that happen. Um, an example of the events that happen, uh, around the tree. We welcome anybody who wants to see the tree to come and knock on our door to, to look at the tree. So if you could, uh, go to the next slide. Um, so this is the, uh, what Titan's neighbor is behind eleven thirty sixth street. It's, uh, a parking lot, and you can see that it does not receive any water or, um, or, or, uh, nutrients from, from the parking lot. So hence we, because we love this tree and because, as Sandy had mentioned, you know, uh, about the wildlife, there have been eagles and, and hawks seen it, we decided to contact, uh, Master and Cohen for an arboretum report. Uh, next slide, please. And they concluded that the, uh, tree protection zone is over top of the proposed new build where the basement, um, foundation of this build would be. And we are also concerned about all the hardscaping that could be added in the future and, um, uh, things like patio stones, et cetera, and all the equipment and storage of items, uh, during the build.
Okay, I'm gonna get you to wrap up, please.
Those are our concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, I have a couple of questions before you go away.
Yes.
You, your driveway abuts the pro- the proponents' property, does it not?
Correct.
And from the street to your garage, is it all hard surface?
The street to our garage is all hard surface, yes.
So you haven't really provided any softscaping there. So I'm trying to understand how that affects your, uh,
It, it was all.
Because you were saying that it affects, uh, your planting of, um, garden or something, but where's this garden?
There's container gardens. We can't, uh, when we bought the house, it had the driveway and it was extended onto the neighbor's driveway, so, um, as you can see, it was all one surface. Um, and so, um, uh, um, so yes, uh,
Okay, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand that because the proposal does not extend beyond the back end of your garage, right?
Um, no, however, that garage has been there probably since nineteen forty two when the house was built. So I think the tree was able to accommodate, um, that garage.
But there, uh, uh, the applicant's also not asking for any side yard variances, so I don't understand, um, the concern with regards to impact on the garage from, from digging, but just.
Well, there's, there is a, uh, there's a stairway going right down and, and the excavation will be right next to the garage. And it's, it's just a wooden structure, so, uh, I'm concerned that.
Okay, but that's, that, that's a construction issue. That's not, that's not something that, uh, you know, it doesn't, but we're only here to decide on variances. If there's any damage to your property, that's, uh, that's a whole different issue that we, that we.
Okay, so I'll have to come back and there's a collapse then and talk to you about that.
No, you don't talk to me. You talk to the Buildings Department then. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, well, it, it is a big issue for us.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'll, I'd like Marco to come back to do a rebuttal, please.
Sure, through you, Mr. Chair. In response to the neighborhood opposition, maybe I'll just start with addressing Titan again with a little bit more time here. Um, the injury that the neighbors are speaking to are speaking to a double tree protection zone. Uh, even if we use the inaccurate location, which is closer to the house, the tree protection zone, as required by the city in policy, is nowhere near, uh, the proposed construction. If we use the accurate location, which pushes the tree further into the yard, and we double the T P Z, which isn't policy, we are far away from Titan. Our intention is that we don't harm the tree. It's, uh, definitely a landmark in the neighborhood, and we don't want to cause it any harm. Uh, the variances that we are applying for are building depth and length. I appreciate you, um, reiterating that to the neighbors who are concerned about the application. The house directly across the street, I just measured it on the V two maps, the Toronto maps. It's twenty two point four meters above grade. Um, the variances we're asking for are entirely below grade, other than that small part on the second floor. So it's, it's essentially an as-of-right massing, um, that has little impact on views to the lake or cross yards that an as-of-right structure would have. And the trees that are proposed to be removed are all within the as-of-right footprint. We've made an effort to not injure that front tree. There's a minor bit of work that's needed to just increase the driveway. Um, but other than that, we've really been mindful of that front tree as well as the tree at the back. And the need or the request for the additional square footage in the basement is to add a rental unit. I didn't get to that on the presentation, but we show the basement, uh, design on there. With Titan, there's no opportunity for this owner to ever put a garden suite back there, right? So if they want rental income to offset the cost for the build, the opportunity is to put it in the basement. We felt below that porch, partially below that rear porch, had the least impact, um, on the massing or neighbors. Um, yeah, to, to speak to the, the, the direct neighbor at fifteen, there will be shoring along that side to ensure that the garage is not damaged. Uh, that is also a construction issue that could be later discussed with the owner and the builder. And, uh, the question about flooding, we're not asking for any coverage variances. The, there is a large portion of the rear part of the lot that's been all left as soft landscaping. And I think that was most of the concerns that I got written down here. If there's any questions from the committee, I'd be happy to answer them as well.
Sure, I, I'll just clarify the, uh, the staircase. I'm looking at your plans. Um, I believe, according to the plans, you're, um, two feet, four inches from the property line on the outside, um, of that staircase?
Yeah, so there will be shoring along that side.
Yeah, but you're, you're not building to the property line.
No.
What's the, um, a- a- and what's the required side yard setback there? One point seven, like you're, you're meeting the one point seven to the main house?
Yeah, so the stairs are allowed to encroach over the side.
Right, right, okay. Okay. Um, does anyone have any questions for anyone at this point, for any of the presenters, before we go to committee?
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to understand this, uh, arboretum report that we haven't seen. How does it differ from the two arboretum reports that are included in the applicant?
Through you, Mr. Chair, the tree is further into the yard than where it is shown on the site plan.
It, it's further away from the, from the house, from the.
Further away from the houses, and you can actually see, um, fifteen goes deeper. It goes behind that parking lot, and in the image that the neighbor was sharing, they're showing the image looking directly south, and you can see they're, they're parallel with the parking lot. They're not looking into the rear yard of the subject site.
So is that tree incorrectly lo- uh, cited on your site plan then?
Incorrectly cited closer to the house when in fact it's further away.
In fact, it's further back.
Correct.
Okay.
So then this is the problem, though, with the arboretum stuff that we're having here.
Yeah.
Because your original Wellwind report from June fifth is noting, um, a tree protection zone of about seven point two meters versus the red oak, which is noting eighteen point eight. So what sort of protection zone is noted? That's why it'd be good to have the third arboretum report, so we'd have all the information in front of us. But do you know what the T P Z is in the updated arboretum report? Or is it the same as Wellwind?
I can pull that up.
Is that the tree is further back?
Wait on it. So it's incomplete. Yeah.
I mean, while we're waiting, I just wanna make a comment, um, that forestry has not flagged that. They, their concern was the, the tree in the front.
But then we don't know if forestry actually went out and looked at it and.
No, but that's the department that we look to for the expertise on that issue.
Correct.
So it is eighteen meters in the report, but that accounts for doubling of the distance.
Okay, so is that eighteen meters still clear where you're proposing to excavate?
Yes. We did speak with forestry this week as well.
And they were okay with it?
They were okay with it.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, this is why the deferral would have given us complete clarity on that, yeah.
But we don't have anything in writing from forestry saying that they're okay with.
No, but we don't have anything in writing from them that they're concerned about it either.
They've been out to site. Forestry has been out to site to see the tree.
Okay, so, um, any other questions? If not, we'll take it into committee for some discussion and/or eventually a motion.
Chair, um, I suppose that, uh, forestry condition one still applies on this application regardless.
Yes. And i- i- it should also be noted that the applicant is saying that, um, they're moving it the structure to the rear slightly in order to accommodate, uh, the preservation of that tree in the front.
So Chair, there are no other comments from, uh, panel members. I am prepared to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Gully.
Chair, I believe that variance one and variance two, both the length and depth being requested is a desirable variance. It's desirable in order to protect the tree at the front yard. With respect to variance number three, the driveway width going from six meter to six point three five is nominal. Uh, all three variances, in my view, are appropriate. They meet the four tests. I'm going to move approval, authorization of these three variances, subject to forestry condition one.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second there for Mr. Gully's motion? I'll second the motion. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, that motion's defeated. Just thought I'd go through the process. Um, is there an alternate motion?
Yeah, I'll move a motion. I'd like to approve it, but I would just like to have all the information, and I just wish the applicant had deferred it. So we did have everything before us, and on that basis, I would move a motion, uh, for a refusal.
Okay, we have a motion for refusal, uh, by Mr. Dalton.
And I'll second that motion.
Uh, seconded by Laura Alderson. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, the, uh, application is refused on a three to two split vote. And I'd like to, we'd like to take a, uh, ten minute break at this point. Thanks. We did give him the choice. I know.
Okay, everyone, we have to restart in one minute. Thanks.
Okay, are we back?
Members, can you please put your camera on?
Okay, folks, let's restart, please. Thank you for the much-needed break. At this point, we're usually a little further ahead in the agenda, but we're onto item two.
Only item two?
Item two, yeah. Eighty-four Tenth Street. This is an application to construct a second and third-story addition above the existing dwelling. There are five variances being requested. Forestry is requesting condition one in the event of approval. We have a letter of objection from the property to the rear, and we have a support petition with six signatures. And where are we? Anthony?
Good morning.
Oh, good morning.
Good morning. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, you can. Sorry, on my notes, I didn't say whether you were online or in person, so I was just trying to figure it out. Thank you. Okay, let us know what you're looking for.
Okay, good morning, everyone, members of the committee. My name is Anthony Provenzano. I'm both the architect and the homeowner of eighty-four Tenth Street, and I'm here to speak in support of our application for a series of minor variances to complete a carefully planned renovation of our home. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have at the end. I believe, because I believe the application is fairly straightforward, but I just wanted to highlight a few things for expanded context. This application before you would represent what we call phase two of a long vision that began with the initial renovation several years ago, started in 2016, ended in 2017. These changes propose a new, sort of a natural continuation of that work focused on enhancing functionality and open space within the existing footprint. It was originally a single-family dwelling. It will continue to be a single-family dwelling. The project has always been designed to respect the character and neighborhood, while meeting our needs. So I've always said that the initial renovation that we're living in now only makes sense when you view it in the context of the proposal in front of you. So over the last eight years, I've communicated these plans to our neighbors, all of our neighbors that I know that are sort of within our reach, and we've received unanimous support from anyone I've talked to about it. The objection letter was news to me. I checked the file, I didn't see it. So that was, it's a bit of a surprise, because the people I talked to, the people who have supported it, I got a lot of "it's about time we move forward" because it wasn't just us anticipating moving forward, you know, sooner than later. So there's been unanimous support in that regard. The key variances we're seeking relief for are three specific areas: height, total building height, that's listed, the main wall height, and the FSI. Additionally, we're proposing modest balconies over the second story that slightly exceed the bylaw limits for area and quality, or quantity. But these balconies are designed to maximize outdoor space in an urban setting where yard space is limited without being excessive. So I just wanted to speak about the height briefly. I just wanted to address this because this issue came up with planning as well. And I think the calculations, like all the numbers before you now are calculations based of measurements based on established grade, which is a bit nebulous and varies due to factors like slope or sidewalk alignment and lot conditions, particularly on a street like ours. And I provided those numbers, so I know, I'm confident in the numbers we provided. But for a barometer, when I was doing this, the neighbors at ninety Tenth Street, they're dear friends of ours, and he's a contractor. Anyway, to better understand the height, one time we chatted, we measured our roofline against the neighbor at ninety Tenth Street using a laser level and a transom. And even what we've, what we established, once you added on, you know, what we were proposing mathematically, we were just about at their eaves. So I just wanted to highlight that, you know, whatever, we may have, we technically exceeded the limit, but I'm not sure of the numbers. I'm just saying, as it stands right now, we will not be the highest house in the neighborhood. We don't have the most area in the neighborhood. And I think just speaking to context, you know, while I've personally met with the neighbors immediately to the north and to the south of us, across the street, up and down the street, everyone seemed to have signed on support because they don't feel their privacy or sunlight will be impacted. They appreciate the design quality, the modest scale. They see this as a positive addition to the neighborhood, and I think the support that we've garnered over time, when people have understood what was going on, addressed their, they can, they can see that, you know, addressed their concerns thoughtfully. So just in closing, I think this proposal represents a modest and thoughtful reinvestment into an aging home. It doesn't build any new, nothing, there's not barely a shovel in the ground. It's just on the existing footprint. And it's a carefully scaled addition that fits seamlessly within the street, and the strong support from the immediate neighbors who are most impacted, I think, indicates that. I think this proposal meets the four tests, and we respectfully ask the committee to approve the variances, enabling us to proceed with the design that will enhance both our home and I think the community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions from panel members?
No, just a comment. I think your design is super cool. I was admiring it on Street View. And I also really appreciated your diligence with respect to number ninety and then, you know, making sure that it wasn't higher than number ninety, so I do appreciate that.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this item?
No, no, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So let's take it into committee then.
I'm prepared to go ahead and make a motion. I actually probably wouldn't have needed a presentation had it not been for that one letter that we received late. I do think this design is wonderful, and I move for approval, subject to urban forestry number two. I believe this application meets the four tests and is certainly desirable for the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Is there a second here?
Second.
Thank you, Dominic. All in favor? Okay, the application is unanimously approved.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Anthony.
Have a great rest of day.
You too. Okay, item three, Four Statler Avenue. This is an application to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are nine variances being requested, one of which has been reduced. Forestry is requesting condition three in the event of approval, and that's all we have. Pavlov?
The first name is Pavlo.
Pavlo, okay.
Yeah, yeah, my name is Pavlo Turco. I reside in, at nineteen eighty-five Bow Beach, Mississauga, and I'm the agent for the applicant and the architect.
Perfect. Perfect. If you could do us a presentation, because we do have some other speakers as well.
I see. Okay, so I just want to highlight the four variances, which are for exceeding height, building height, and exceeding ground floor level, and exceeding level of the lift.
And you're, just to be clear, you're amending variance four?
Yes, we did. Yeah, the community planning had a concern with the building height, so we reduced it, and they accepted it. They had no other concern.
So just for everyone else to know, to be aware, we're now looking at ten point six-six as opposed to eleven point twenty-seven.
So I just want to give a rationale for why we're asking for increased height. The, that block of the city is known for frequent basement floodings based due to old infrastructure located at the insufficient depths. So the owners last year went through a major flooding in their basement, lots of belongings and family memorabilia. So they instructed me to not to do basement deeper than four feet below grade and utilize the attic space for storage, for dry storage. No more storage in the basement to prevent that disaster again. So this is how the height variances derived, because everything was raised up. All the setbacks are maintained, lot coverage. The FSI is increased because of the used utilized attic space for storage. We are, we think the proposal is meeting all the four tests and submitting for your approval.
Okay, is that all you want to say?
At this point, I may be rebutting some comments from the objective party.
I have a question. I just, I would like the site plan to be pulled up, please. Okay, can you indicate on here, because you're asking for a building length variance, but I don't have the indication on the site plan where the as-of-right is versus the variance?
So the house to the south, which is, which is west of... That's, that's most likely the line of as-of, as-of-right.
That's, okay.
Our second floor, second floor area actually stepping over that line.
Okay, so just to jut out, because you don't have a dimension for the, the one that doesn't go back as far.
It was, it was determined from the floor plan, essentially, by the zoning examiner.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just, just pointing out, I mean, it's helpful to us to know what it is that we're approving from a variance perspective, and visuals is most helpful for that.
Yeah, the lot is only forty foot wide, and the only way to get a decent layout was to...
No, no, I'm not, yeah, I just wanted to understand where, how much you're asking for...
Well, that jog is the...
So the jog is essentially the variance?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, or are we gonna go forward with the speakers? Okay, so we have Scott Mann as the first speaker.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, thank you. So my name is Scott Mann, and I live right next door to Stattler Avenue. And I appreciate the opportunity to share some concerns we have with the variances. So I just want to begin by stating that we don't feel that the variances are minor in nature. The application proposes to increase the home's height, depth, length, and overall massing, basically exceeding zoning regulations in nearly every measurable dimension. And as you stated, there's nine variances in total. They also don't seem to be small departures from the zoning bylaws, even with the adjusted height there. The house would still be eighteen percent longer, ten percent deeper, twelve percent taller, and overall floor space would increase by about thirty-six percent. So as neighbors, this raises a couple concerns for us. The first being privacy. So the larger footprint and elevated height would increase the overlook onto our property and the living spaces. Encroachment, the reduced setbacks that are mentioned in the proposal mean the structure would be much closer to our property than the bylaw intends, and it would alter the sense of space and separation that defines our neighborhood. And finally, shading. So the taller and longer house would cast more shadows on our yard in the afternoon and early evening, basically affecting our enjoyment of the property as well as our plant life. And then, we are very concerned about the health of a large maple tree that's on our lawn. So I know, I know there's been discussion about urban forestry. We didn't see any kind of arborist report in the documents. And our concern is that the tree is very close to the property line, and the root system likely extends into the area where the foundation would occur, excavation would occur. We noted in the applicant's tree declaration form that they concluded that the proposed work is not within the zone. However, based on our own research and calculations, we feel that it might be. And so we're just asking, you know, first, has there been a third party that's verified any of this information? And if not, we're asking that what, that there could be a third party that could come in and verify that this is, that this information is actually accurate. So we'd like to see a full independent arborist report before any construction is approved and also understand what kind of insurance or compensation would be available if our tree was either damaged or lost. Overall, we understand the difficulty of the Toronto housing market, and we don't want to stop development. We support development and, you know, the desire to upgrade or modernize homes, but these variances represent significant departure from what's allowed in all key dimensions. And we just fear that some of these could set a precedent within the neighborhood. So we just ask you to weigh the broader implications for privacy, neighborhood character, and environmental impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from panel members? No? Okay, moving on, Philip Brown?
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity to address a bunch of things. So, so like the previous speaker, the sheer number of variances requested for this, I think, really moves this from minor to super significant. If, if city staff were able to pull up, actually, the original drawing for the application, this, this home is in a unique situation in that most applications for, for variance might impact, you know, a neighbor on either side. In this case, the way the lot on number four Stattler's laid out...
It's a key lot situation, so you've got lots coming in on the other side. I mean, I live in that reality, so totally...
Yeah, so it impacts six backyards, which, which, you know, again, I think is, it's, it's unique, and it certainly, it's a huge issue. I think the other, like the previous speaker talked about, in terms of privacy, shade, the impact of the tree to, to the neighbor space, you know, I think are all major, major issues. In a case like this, you know, the application kind of defies logic. If you look to the photo that we took from our backyard, and there's still two other backyards beside each of ours that are impacted. The subject property is on the left. It's to be replaced by something as big as and taller than the one on the right, which is a huge, huge, huge departure from what goes on in all of the streets around there. And I think it sets such a really bad precedent. But, but it's the logic side of it that has me the most perplexed. When, when we're dealing with, you know, post-retirement-aged people living on their own, you know, to then sort of build something that's a giant, giant, giant home, it seems to set itself up more for sale of the lot, either with plans that have been approved or with a massive monster home on them. And the person gets to leave having, you know, financially benefited, but, but all of the other seven or eight properties around are permanently damaged by the change in shading and trade coverage and privacy and everything else. So for that reason, along with all the others, I would ask that the committee deny this application. I'm happy to pass the rest of my speaking time over to Irene Koshansky, who had some other comments she'd like to...
Irene will have her own speaking time. I'm just gonna make a comment that...
Oh, okay, we were talking, we had this...
Sorry, Mr. Chair. So they are from the same...
Oh, they're from the same address. Okay, sorry, you didn't see that. Yeah, go ahead then. But, but, you know, so hold that time, but I just want to make a comment, because you're saying that, you know, people are retired or whatever. You know, we don't differentiate whether you're twenty years old or two hundred years old. We're not zoning for people. We're zoning for houses, and it's a question of...
No, I do, I do appreciate that.
So those comments, quite frankly, are irrelevant to us.
I, fair enough.
Okay, thank you. Irene, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And I also live at twenty-two Wilmar Road, along with my husband, Philip Brown. I thank everybody for this time. Between Philip and Scott, the first speaker, they did cover a lot of the points that were concerns for me as well. And as far as the unique location of this property, abutting as many other properties on Wilmar, which is perpendicular to this street, the reality is that these, these six or seven homes, they, they make up almost half a block, actually, probably close to half a block of homes. So there is...
I think we're gonna be most interested in knowing how it impacts you specifically. The fact that it backs onto a number of properties, they can speak for themselves.
Then my concerns are much like the first two speakers, privacy, shade, and just the ability to approve a project that is so far above and beyond what's allowed, sets a dangerous precedent. Much like the first speaker, I'm not opposed to development. My husband and I are both realtors. We are very much pro-development. There just has to be something that is in place that would, would prevent excessiveness in the future, as well as on this particular property.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
If there's anything Philip wants to add, I will give him the rest of my time.
I, I actually do. So, excuse me, you're at twenty-two Wilmar, is that correct?
Correct.
And I'm just curious, it looks like a relatively new build. I'm just wondering, did you have to go to Committee of Adjustment for any variances yourself?
We bought the property already built. It was three years old when we bought it.
I see. Okay, thank you.
He said his piece. I'm gonna leave it at that. Okay. Barbara? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm at six Stattler, right next door. Oh, sorry. I'm at six Stattler, the house right next door. The only concerns I have is any damage to the retaining wall when they excavate the driveway, and also the fence that's on my property when they...
We can't deal with that. You're gonna have to deal with that with them. Excuse me, and/or if they're not listening to you, call Buildings Department to complain. But do you have any concerns with what they're proposing?
Well, the height, for sure. Just like the first and second speakers, it's the same...
Because at this point, what we want to hear is, you know, how it's gonna impact you, whether you think it's reasonable, whether it's not. That's really what we're here for, so...
Okay, well, then it's the same concerns.
Okay. You're gonna echo the other speakers.
Okay, thank you.
Barb Shokovsky?
Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna come back to Pavlo, unless there's anyone else here?
No, there's not.
Okay.
Okay, can I, can I comment on those comments?
Absolutely.
The tree, we looked at it, and the new foundation wall will be one extra foot away from the property line from existing wall. So we will not be doing any, we will not be affecting the tree system. We will be staying away another extra foot for excavations. So I, there is no concern. Privacy and shading. Privacy is no second-story balcony, no second-story decks. We are staying on the ground floor. We're not peeking from above. For shading, the good half of the lot is still wide open, so the sun comes up. Everybody should get enough sunlight, to my eye. Barbara's own house, six, is a, is a big house, which, which, speaking of precedences, every third house on this block is a precedent. So we're not creating a precedence for this area. We're staying within the established character of the neighborhood, which is now being developed, unfortunately or fortunately for some people, right? And then the speculating on whether the house is for sale, let's just take it off the table. This is not fair to anybody. I still think that the house is, looking at the front elevation, it's a modest house, well-designed, well-scaled, well-balanced. It's just that the, we, we had a good, true reason to increase the height and go with a larger GFI because of the utilized attic space, and that's just a technical thing. It was not an intent to create a larger house. That's how, that's how we derived to it. There was a good and true reason for it. So anyway, I'm still maintaining that the, it's a desirable development in the area in, in character with newer houses built on a block. Judge from that picture provided by Philip, six Stattler, we're nowhere, we are almost at the same size as six Stattler, and we should not be adversely affecting anything on that block. So submitting kindly for your approval, again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from panel members? No? Okay, so let's take it into committee.
So with that, I'd move a motion for approval, as I do believe the application meets the four tests, and that'd be the application as amended, because variance number four has been tweaked and subject to forestry condition.
Okay, so that's a motion to approve as amended, subject to forestry condition three.
Yes, and I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. All in favor? That's unanimous approval. Thank you to Pavlo and to the other presenters and to all the others. Okay, item four. Twenty-eight Lavilla Boulevard. This is an application to construct a one-story rear addition, a covered front porch, a rear yard deck, and a detached garage in the rear yard. This will be considered a new dwelling. There are twelve variances being requested. Sorry, there were originally twelve, been reduced to eleven, and three of those have been reduced. Forestry is requesting condition two in the event of approval, and we're back to Jonathan Bintkovsky.
Good morning, committee.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
If we can just get a brief overview on this one, just given the number of variances and the reductions and all that?
Would you like me to formally also go over the changes, or do you want to just leave them as red marked on the screen, Mr. Chair?
Just, yeah, maybe just focus on the reductions and sort of the rationale here.
Yeah. I'm assuming there's no other speakers. Planning, there was actually some concerns with the coverage. I spoke with planning, and we arrived at a solution of eliminating the rear yard landscaping variance. The concern was the dwelling would cover forty-three point one percent. The dwelling actually only covers thirty-two point seven-seven percent of the lot. That coverage does include the replacement detached garage in the rear yard. So how that translates to the variances itself, although we are maintaining some of the side walls and the front wall, this was interpreted as a new dwelling. So that has led to the cover, the, the front yard setback variance, which is existing. The front yard is not changing. The side yard setbacks are not changing.
That's why the, the large number of variances.
Correct. Additionally, the variance for the platform is actually, this is a bungalow, and it's proposed to be maintained a bungalow. The variance for the platform is actually the front porch. There are maybe two other notes I quickly want to go over. The dwelling itself, if we could bring up the site plan, please. The building length of seventeen point five eight meters includes a... The building length of seventeen point five eight meters includes a kind of laundry area that is in the middle of the dwelling. The actual main dwelling itself is only fifteen point six meters in length. I would also note that to the west, which is the left side of the stream, and to the north behind is all a school. So in terms of any type of impact is mitigated by that. Additionally, the impact is further mitigated to twenty-six, the dwelling to the east, by maintaining the existing setback at two point four nine meters, which accesses the garage. In my opinion, you know, it's fairly self-explanatory. It's, it's a one-story addition on a bungalow. And a replacement garage in the rear.
No, totally makes sense. Thank you. Any questions? No? Okay. Anyone ready for a motion?
Sure, I'll move one. I believe the application as amended is a good one, meets the four tests. And with that, I'd move a motion for approval, subject to the forestry condition.
As amended. Oh, I, sorry. Got it. Yeah.
Second.
Dominic? All in favor? Okay, unanimous approval. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Okay, item five, one thirty-four Strath Avenue. This is an application to maintain the existing rear yard deck. There is one variance being requested. Forestry is requesting condition two in the event of approval. Metrolinks has some advisory comments, and we have an arborist report on file. Marco Viera. Welcome, Marco.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Marco Viera, and I'll be agent for this application.
Yeah, I don't think we need a full presentation, just maybe a brief overview as to how we got here.
Certainly. So through you, Mr. Chair, this is actually, and I would ask for your guidance on this. I would like to see if the purpose of the application can just be changed to, to maintain the existing rear yard deck by way of rebuilding or repairing certain sections. And this is because the client purchased the house with the current deck, and it's, in its current form, is basically the size that we are applying for. There's a slight difference in terms of the elevated deck off of the rear first floor. So basically, it, it's there, he bought the house with it, and we're repairing the existing structure of it, floorboards, columns, and so on. So we arrived at, you know, community of adjustments because it wasn't originally built to, according to the previous building permit. So when our client bought it, through the closing of the sale, that's when they discovered that it wasn't in accordance with the previous permit. And fast forward many years later, here we are trying to basically legalize the existing deck.
I, I, I don't think you need to change it, Marco, but, because you, i- i- if we approve it as existing, you have the right to repair the existing.
Perfect.
I don't think you need to get a building permit to repair what's already there, right?
Okay, then if that's the case, then the single variance stays, and it's basically just.
Yeah, I mean, unless you're proposing to change the size of it.
No, no.
No.
The, the, the plans reflect the correct size that we wanna repair or rebuild to.
Okay, then I think you're fine.
Okay, then that sounds good.
Did they ding you for a double?
Do you have any questions? Sorry.
No, never mind. It's okay. I think we're good. Any questions? No? Okay, motion?
Chair, I'm gonna move approval of the variance being requested. I think it's appropriate, necessary. I don't see any negative impact allowing this to proceed. And that's subject to urban forestry, too. There is a Metrolinks report, but it's just advisory.
Okay. Dominic's moved a motion to approve. Is there a seconder?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Approved, unanimous approval. Thank you, Marco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and committee members. Have a wonderful day.
You, too. Okay, item six. Ten Emmett Avenue. This is an application to construct a new detached garage in the rear yard. There are four variances being requested. All we have on file is a support petition with seven signatures. Tyler Walker, and he's in person.
Hello.
Good morning.
I'm a bit of a late eight, sorry.
It's okay. I don't think we need a, a full-blown presentation. If you wanna just kinda give us some highlights on what's going on?
Sure. My name is Tyler Walker, thirty-eight Tiverton Avenue. My clients would like to build a garage in their backyard, similar to what is surrounding their, the alleyway that they connect to. We feel that it is appropriate in size and scale for what's around, and, and, yeah, that's basically the extent of it. I'm happy to go through my, my presentation. It's much more eloquent, I promise.
I think we're good.
Great.
I'm assuming there's no one else to speak to this?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any questions? No? I think we're good then, thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Motion?
Chair, I'm gonna move that the four variances be authorized, that they, they be approved. There's no issue with respect to any of them. With respect to the tests under the Act, move approval, no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. All in favor? Unanimous approval.
Thank you so much.
Okay, item seven has been deferred. Item eight, seven Farmar Avenue, or Farmar. Application to construct a second-story addition above the existing garage, a rear two-story addition, and a new covered porch in the rear yard. There are two variances being requested. Forestry is requesting condition one in the event of approval. And our speaker is Antonella Wilde.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chair. Do you, would you like it in a, a presentation? I.
I, I don't, I, I don't think so. We can, if you could just give us a brief overview and stand by for questions, I think we're good.
Yes, of course. So you see there are no concerns from neighbors or community planning. We have a very modest addition with two variances. We believe they're minor. You see, the sec, the variances for setback are, you know, building in line with the existing building, resulting in these two minor adjustments, as well as the, GFA is certainly in keeping with the patterns of the neighborhood and in precedents in, in the past of applications being proved. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We're aware of urban forestry conditions, so happy to.
Super, thank you. Any questions?
What is the current side yard setback?
It is, it is one meter. And so if you see on the top, the left corner of the building there, what's it, sorry, zero point nine eight west. What's it, zero point nine eight west? So that's the existing garage, right? So above it, we're putting an addition. So that is existing, but then, as you see, as it extends across to the east, across to the back of the property, you know, the, the building is not exactly in line with the property line, so it tapers to one meter. Or it widens out to one meter.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? No? No other speakers?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay, let's take it into committee.
So with that, I'd like to move a motion for approval, as I believe the application meets the four tests, subject to the forestry condition.
Thank you, Mr. Galtung. Seconder? Oh, thank you, Mr. Ross.
I'll take on that.
Sorry? All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Antonella.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to item nine. Seven Edgemore Drive. This is an application to construct a partial second-story addition. There is one variance being requested. And, Mr. Price?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. My name is Addison Mill Price. I'm a registered professional planner at Design Plan Services, located at eighty-seven Skyway Avenue, here today on behalf of the owner.
Okay, I don't think we need a presentation, but I need a clarification on the purpose stated. Because really, all you're proposing here is a deck, right?
Yes, that's, that's true, Mr. Chair. The only change from the previous proposal is a slight increase in the size of the deck. However, because that original deck was included as part of the, the previous building permits, or, sorry, I should say the active building permits, that original scope of work, the, the addition, was captured under the zoning review when we submitted this, this revised plan.
Okay, so you're coming back to us really for what you've already done, other than to change the size of the deck?
That's, that's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I just. Yeah, to me, it didn't make, the purpose didn't make sense, but I kinda get it. Okay, thanks. I kinda get it.
We get it, too.
I, I think I got it in my mind a while ago. I'm playing a little bit of catch-up here now, but, okay. Any other questions? No? Okay, so take it into committee. I'm assuming there's no other speakers?
Uh, no.
No? Anyone ready for a motion?
Sure. So with that, I'd like to move a motion for approval, as I believe the application meets the four tests, and there are no conditions.
Thank you, Bill.
I'll second that motion.
Thanks, Laura. All in favor? Okay, unanimous approval.
Thank you.
Okay, item ten. Sixteen Vanvery Street. This is an application to construct a new fourplex and a garden suite in the rear yard. There are three variances being requested, one of which has been reduced. Forestry is requesting condition one in the event of approval. Transportation has three conditions in the event of approval. Metrolinks has advisory comments, and we have a letter of concern.
Can, can I just, I thought on the applicant revision page, number four was increased, not decreased? Is that correct? I've got that note. On the revision page.
Oh.
It's actually, in, number four is increased, not decreased.
Right, so it's less of a variance, because there's a minimum driveway aisle width, and they were deficient, so they've increased it by a foot.
So, yeah, it's somewhat less of a variance. Yeah, when I said reduced, I meant the impact. Anyway, got it. Okay. Number ten. Sean Galberth? Galberth?
Uh, good morning.
Good morning, sir. I don't think.
I'm a brief planner here on behalf of the application.
Okay, I don't think we need a full presentation, but if you could perhaps just give us an overview and sort of explain why the reduction and all that.
Actually, because it's.
Sure.
You would like a four, okay.
Because it's a fourplex and a garden suite, I think we need.
You want a full presentation?
Plus, there's a letter of concern on file.
Okay. Let's do it.
I would note, I would note that the letter of concern is from a neighbor across the street, and their, their comments were all about construction.
Right, yeah.
Construction timeline, noise by law, things like that. They didn't have a concern with the actual project.
But.
Nevertheless, it's still.
You wanna, okay.
A garden suite, so I would like a.
The, the committee would still like a presentation, if you'd like.
If my cover letter could be brought up, please?
There's two cover letters, right?
Uh, that one there. Thank you. So first, there were a couple minor tweaks to the proposal based on discussions with transportation staff. So as on this image here, the, the footprint of the fourplex has been shifted slightly east towards the side lot line. That it was to make more room for the widened driveway. That was the subject of the improved, but still required variance for driveway width. Also in discussion with transportation staff, the location of the three parking spaces in the rear yard were shifted slightly south to create a little extra room for maneuverability in the rear yard. If you could scroll down, please? Keep going. So this is the subject site. To the rear, there is no residential property to the rear. There is the, a, a no-frills grocery store. And so that is why we're requesting the rear yard, rear yard setback variance. There's no, there's no impact. The, the goal of that provision is to protect residential properties to the rear. In this case, it's a, it's a block wall, so there's no, there's no benefit to that. The other variance for the, the garden suite are the side angular planes. The, if you could go to that one in my, in my cover letter. The, the amount of building that projects above the angular plane requirement is only eighteen centimeters. We've provided extra-large side yard setbacks for the, for the garden suite to create that additional space from the, actually, just stop here, thank you. So you can, oops, uh, next one, the side, there we go. You can see the side yard setbacks for the garden suite are significantly larger. They're basically double what is required under the zoning bylaw. And that reduces the amount of building that is above the angular plane requirement to only eighteen centimeters of building height. As to the fourplex itself, as committee is well aware, the city has extensive policies promoting intensification in established residential areas. This certainly helps contribute to that. In addition, the first, the first unit on the ground floor is an accessible unit, which is, in my experience, very, very rare in multiplexes, going beyond what the city expects for buildings of this scale. The height variance only pertains to a parapet above the, above the, the roof. The roof itself is ten centimeters above the ten-meter permitted limit. And then there's required for building, the function of the building, a parapet above that, which is, which is what triggers the variance. The side yard setback on the east side is by law permitted. And the side yard setback on the west side is significantly larger than required because of the driveway, and so we, we believe that impacts are, are mitigated and well-managed. The property on the, on the east side is an existing, as you're familiar, old-school Tobaco triplex with basically a hundred percent rear, rear yard parking area. We also have a front yard setback variance. If this image can be just be scrolled over so we can see the front lot line. There we go. So the existing house on the property is situated much closer to the existing front lot line than we are proposing. What we're proposing is to align the front of the, the fourplex with the house to the west, which in this case is down. The variance is required because the, the triplex to the east, which is on this image, is situated significantly farther back. And so the averaging creates the variance.
Okay, no, it was, it's a good proposal.
Thank you. We're aware of the conditions. We've worked with transportation already, and we're totally comfortable with all of them.
Yeah, I, I actually really like the, the location of this, and the way it's essentially transitioning from a higher density or from a commercial area to the low-density residential. So very appropriate location for what you're proposing.
I agree.
Okay. We're all good then?
What I would also note, sorry, that the.
I think we're all good now.
So I'd be, I'd be pleased.
Okay.
I just really wanted to hear about the front yard setback, because I did note that it was.
It, it, it's based on the average of the two, and the other one's setback weight. And it's probably setback that far so they could do front yard landscaping all in one place and pave over the entire back.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Basically, that's exactly, I would imagine, the case.
So i- i- it all makes sense.
So you'll be lined, you'll be lined up with number twenty then, basically?
Yeah.
That's exactly correct, yeah.
And so long as they're not going forward of number twenty, I'm okay. Yeah, and so long as they're not, uh, going forward of number twenty, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that you don't see a lot of front yard setback variances, uh, very often. In this case, it's to basically improve the existing, um, character of the neighborhood by making it more in line with what is the prevailing character.
Yeah. Okay.
So if there's no other comments, I'd be pleased to, uh, make a motion to approve this.
No, wait, 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 wait.
Have we got somebody else? Sorry?
Is there, are, are there any speakers on this item? Yeah, go ahead. Come on, it's okay, come on up. So we're just, need to get you-
My name's Ken Wilson, I live, uh, right beside, on the west side of this sixteen Vanvery, I meant twenty. And, um, looking at the variances, the first variance is, is a good thing, actually, because it, uh, gives more front lawn to the, uh, to the house.
Yep.
The, the new, new house. Uh, when I built my house, I also knocked down the front little porch, so made a bigger front lawn, so will be in line in the front, so that's good. Number two, uh, um, the, I wanna mention, first of all, on the, on my west side, is also a sixplex.
Wow.
I was kinda hoping that this house, it sixteen, would, would be a house, not a, not a fourplex or sixplex, but, uh, that's okay. Um, in the backyard on the, on my west side, being a sixplex, there's a big parking lot, cars there all the time. Um, and I'm concerned about the density, the, all the action going on in the sixteen that they wanna do. The fourplex and, uh, and the garden suite in the back, and only three parking, uh, spots. Uh, I just feel like they're trying to squeeze too much in that, uh, in that, on that lot there. Uh, so I guess I would object to variances, uh, uh, three, five, six, and seven. Variance four, I'm not quite sure why, uh, the minimum driveway width, six meters wide, I must have a misunderstanding, because you don't need six meters for a driveway to get, get to the backyard, so I don't understand that one, but let's not talk about that.
So you don't have a problem with that one, then?
What's that?
You don't have a problem with number four, then?
Uh, no, no. Uh, it looks to me like variance three, five, six, and seven are because they're trying to squeeze so much into that lot with the, uh, garden shed in the back. Um, so, really, I'm only here to kinda can, be a, show concern about how much is supposed to be going on in that lot with only a few parking spaces, not much back lawn, and that's not, that garden shed's a major bloody house, it's six meters high, it's, it's, it's almost as big as the house I got, you know? And I, I just feel there's too much they're trying to put in that, on that lot, and that's all.
Okay, um-
Can I just now, so I just wanted to comment, so you would be happier if they weren't building the garden suite, that they were just building a fourplex then?
That's right, yeah. Also, my hearing's not very good, I think you said I'd be happy with a-
Yeah, just, you'd be happy with the fourplex, but not with the garden suite?
That's, that's, that's true, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't, didn't realize you've got a sixplex on the other side of you as well?
I'm on his west side.
No, no, but the others, on, on the, to the west of you is, is a multiplex as well?
That's right, sixplex, then me, and then sixteen, and then the sixplex beside him, so we're gonna have a sixplex, my house, a fourplex and a sixplex.
Yeah.
And a garden suite.
I'm sorry?
Plus the garden suite. There'll be a garden suite in, in that mix as well.
I, yeah, garden suite makes it a fourplex plus one, so it's like a fiveplex a little bit.
Really, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, so let's come back, uh-
I think it's another speaker. Another speaker, Mr. Chair?
Do you wanna speak as well?
Please.
Come on up. If, if you guys don't register, then I don't know.
Good morning.
Can we get your name and address, please?
Of course. It's, uh, Jeff's, Jeff Saglili, thirteen Vanvery, I'm also a, a neighbor on the street, and, uh, I apologize, I'm not familiar with the process, I don't, I'm not familiar with your four pillars that, that you judge your, your, uh, the variance rulings on. Um, I'm only here because, I guess, I can only speak about the variances and how it affects me.
Absolutely, that's all we wanna hear.
So, I understand some of the variances are related to parking and driveway, uh, in that neighborhood, if you, uh, can pull up the neighborhood, there is a, a townhouse at Vanvery and Royal York, there is the mul- sixplex, there's now the project, there's Ken, and then there's another sixplex. So what you see from the photos, there would be cars all along Vanvery, it's a one-way street, it just feel that this project right now, um, because there's five units and there's only three parking spots, that means two units are gonna have to park on the street, just adds more vehicles to the road.
If they have cars.
You, yeah, that's why they put, I think, the bikeal, bike spots in the plans.
Yep.
But if you live in the neighborhood, you'll notice the street is full of cars, it's families with children, I just wanna, you know, obviously the plan, if they can make it more appropriate for the number of units, I, I think it would be, uh, valuable for the na- for the area, for the street. Other than that, uh, you know, I'm happy to see that there is, uh, density increasing, there's more units, should bring more families, uh, so it, it's a positive side, but our concern for myself is the street parking.
Okay. Um, unfortunately, or fortunately, depends how you look at it, uh, the city no longer requires, uh, one car per unit, uh, they could actually build this without providing any parking, and we couldn't do anything about it.
Yeah, it's, it came this morning, I, I, I realized-
So I, I, I'm actually, uh, happy to see that they're making an attempt to provide some parking.
Yeah.
Cause I do have a concern about multi-units going in with no parking, and some of the variances, I think, are directly a result of their trying to squish in those parking spots.
Yes.
Cause I think if they did two parking spots, they would actually have fewer variances here.
Yes.
So, it all depends how you look at it.
I mean, I apologize, I'm just-
No, 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 that's okay, and, and-
Neighbor, not familiar with the process and all the-
But there's been a lot of changes at the city recently, and most of the residents, uh, uh, I think of, of Toronto don't realize how much has changed, and we're, we can only, uh, work within what the bylaws are that the city has produced, and so, I mean, that's why I was saying I, I actually don't mind this proposal, because they're trying to accommodate, um, some parking, which a lot of other developers don't.
I mean, the only reason I'm affected is I happen to have a, a mutual driveway with my neighbor.
Yeah, for sure.
So we have to back out every time, or to come in a lot?
Yeah.
And, you know, and as if, because I don't know the rules, that, you know, your question today was like, how does it affect you? Yeah, you know-
That's what we wanna know, yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? If there are no other speakers, um, I'll come back to Sean.
Uh, thank you very much.
I think I kinda did your rebuttal for you already, anyway.
You, you basically did, um, this, the, the owners were looking to try and balance parking and units, um, and, um, you, you were correct that the number of parking spaces basically triggers two of the variances. Because there are three parking spaces, it's considered essentially a parking lot, like same as if it was, you know, a large parking lot, and so there's the, the width of the parking space increases and the drive aisle width increases. Um, but yeah, so this, I think this is a pretty good balance between providing sufficient soft landscaping, providing parking, and to minimize impacts to, to the street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, any other questions? If not, let's take it into committee.
Chair, I, I do have a question.
Sure.
The representative agent, um, at first review, um, I was wondering why the mix, uh, why the additional garden suite in the back? Why not a fourplex or even five units? Why the garden suite at the back?
So, in part, it's simply to provide more housing. Um, you know, that is the goal of the city, and to help achieve that goal, the garden suite permitted use is, uh, is being included, but then also, when you go to five units, you can unlock, um, CMHC, uh, finance, uh, financing, uh, and it becomes much easier to financially afford to actually build the thing. Uh, it's very different from four units to five units.
It's just, um, you know, I understand the fact that you're trying to maximize-
Sorry, I think, I think his mic just turned off.
Your mic's off.
I understand that, uh, you're trying to maxif- maximize some parking, provide parking there, but I also find it so tight in terms of even maneuvering in and out, and the safety of coming in and out. Um, I know that it can prac- in practicality, it can work, uh, and I know that they've submitted, uh, vehicle maneuvering, um, diagrams that, that do show that in practicality it can happen, but again, that odd occasion when somebody's coming in and trying to get out, and how, how you do it, whether you back up all the way, the complexity, that's why the, the suite, to me, in the rear yard, uh, sort of provided one element that didn't fit the supply of parking and the landscaping amenity that, that I would expect here. I know it's not a question, it's a comment.
Thank you, as the chair noted, um, no parking is actually required at all, um, and we are located, you know, one house away from Royal York, a very well-serviced transit corridor, um, so we think that this is a really good balance of providing some parking, providing an accessible unit, providing five units of housing, and the, the narrowness of the garden suite also allows for much more soft landscaping in the rear yard than frankly you would typically see, and it, it's striking that balance between a smaller than we probably could have done garden suite with soft landscaping and with parking, and I think this strikes a really good balance between achieving all these different goals.
Thank you.
But I under- I understand your concern.
Yeah, this is one of those situations where it would have been easier to build a fiveplex and leave the back for parking and landscaping, but then you're, you wouldn't be in approved use under the zoning bylaw, so you'd have a whole different issue.
That's correct, yeah, we could provide, um, like, there isn't, there is a version of this project that is completely as-of-right, would include probably a larger garden suite, would have no parking at all, um, it would be pushed back on the site, um, so that it doesn't maintain that street wall that the rest of the block has. I don't think that in any of those scenarios and as-of-right condition is actually a better project. I know that this triggers variances and it triggers some compromises and some, some give and take a little bit, but I think overall, this is a better project as a result.
I would agree. There are transportation conditions, are you okay with those?
We are.
Okay. Um, you may also want to, uh, inform potential tenants that you're, you've got undersized parking spots, I think that's been put in as a condition all, uh, uh, in condo situations, but we'll leave that up to you.
The, the parking spaces themselves, actually, if there were only two parking spaces, the parking space sizes would not have triggered a variance.
I, I realize that.
Because we have the, the third space.
Because you have the three, I understand that, but-
Yeah, yeah, we're happy to inform them.
Someone with a large vehicle's gonna have an issue, that's, you know, someone with a smaller vehicle, no issue. That was my only point, um, anyone else? No? So let's, sorry, um-
Should I sign off?
Are, are you with one of the other two gentlemen?
Sorry, we've already-
No.
Done rebuttals.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's take it into committee? Any discussion or-
Oh, I, I had started to propose a motion until I realized there was another speaker, we've never heard that-
No, 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 we're not gonna hear another speaker, cause-
No, I said we had heard another speaker, so I'm prepared to go ahead with that motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I think, I think the balance is, is, is good, there's always compromises when there's a balance, um, we've talked about those compromises, like the parking and so on, um, I think the transportation conditions apply, and I think there's forestry here as well.
Yes.
So I would move to approve the application, I think it meets the four tests, subject to the, uh, to forestry and subject to the transportation condition.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, is there a seconder?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous approval. Thank you to Sean and to the neighbors. Well, you were opposed, sorry, I missed that, sorry, so-
I was sitting on the fence.
You were, okay.
Bill, the guy, Bill, seconded it.
So that's a, that's a four to one. Laura?
The disenter.
It's okay, we're not one mind. Uh, does anyone want another break, or should we keep going?
I just wanted to add that I would have been more than happy to approve the fourplex, I just felt the garden suite was-
Was pushing it.
Pushing it, and also, I just, yeah, I just feel that there's just too much happening on that one lot, so that's why I couldn't approve it.
Okay, fair enough. Um, back to my original question, do we want another break, or should we keep going?
Can we continue and then have lunch? Break for lunch, or?
Well, we'll adjourn for lunch. There's no afternoon session.
For lunch.
But we can, but we can delay the remainder of the agenda. If we get to that stage.
Yeah, it's a question of whether, yeah, how long we're gonna go, if, if we're anticipating going past one o'clock, we should break for lunch, if not, let's just try to finish it in one shot.
Well, we got two of them, we only had one.
Eleven, twelve, yeah, let's keep going. Okay, so item eleven, uh, Nine Windover Road, this is an application to construct a one-story rear addition with a rear deck, there are five variances being requested. TTC has some advisory comments, and we have, uh, two letters of support. Uh, Matthew Fung.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chair and council members, I'm Matthew Fung.
Good morning.
Acting represent- acting representative of the homeowner at Nine Windover Road. Um, I have a presentation, I can kinda quickly go through the context of the site.
Uh, yeah, if you, we don't think we need a full one, but if you've got some, wanna hit some high points, please do.
So, if you, if you see the site, south of the site, there is a Green Pea parking lot, um, it's because the TTC ra- uh, TTC subway actually runs underneath that, I'm actually currently, uh, dealing with, uh, Ms. Tina Fang from the TTC to get their approval. Um, so what we're trying to do is, we're proposing to, um, replace the existing sunroom, um, in the rear elevation, so all the work is gonna be done to the rear, what we're doing is we're enlarging the existing sunroom, um, that's currently kinda like tattered a bit, and we're gonna just update it so that the homeowner can, you know, enjoy the, like a, a small little sanctuary place for her and her family, read a book and what have you, so that's the extent of the project, it's only a, a single-story addition, um, to the rear, and we do have the letter of support, um, from, uh, the immediate neighbor to the north, um, she doesn't have any neighbors to the south, and she doesn't have any rear, uh, yard neighbors to the east.
Okay, um, thank you, are, any questions? From panel members, no, I, I have a Kevin Sack as a in-person, uh, for support.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of committee, my name is Kevin Sack, I live, uh, immediately next door to number nine, uh, um, at a Love and Windover Road, uh, I just want to say that we've been consulted, uh, throughout the planning and, uh, considerations that the homeowner's made, uh, to do this, uh, project, and we're very much in approval with it, and, uh, work well with the homeowner, and don't foresee any issues.
Perfect, and you're, you're realistically the only one, uh, directly impacted by this, cause the rest of it is all Green Pea parking.
That's correct, in fact, uh, my- That's correct. In fact, uh Jillian's house next door is right across from Green Pea. And uh I'm just right across from, we're both across from Green Pea Park. So there's, you know, anyway. So I won't take your time, of course. We're just very much in favor of it. It's gonna improve the back look of the house. And in the back of our house, we'll see something nicer.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sack.
Um, no other speakers, I'm assuming?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so back to committee. Is anyone ready for a motion?
Sure.
Uh, I'll move a motion for approval as I believe the application meets the four tests and there are no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a second here?
I can second that motion.
Thanks, Ms. Alderson. All in favor? Okay, I'm looking this time. Yes, unanimous approval.
I do want, I do need a minute.
Okay, so let's take, let's take a ten-minute break. Okay, thanks. Twelve is deferred.
Twelve is a four.
Thirteen is next.
Why did they ask for a presentation and I'm on the garden suite?
I had no idea there were two people in opposition to him.
To which one?
No, because they didn't, because they didn't register, so it's a good thing I asked for a presentation.
They have the perfect lot. No neighbors.
But you know, there is a fi- there is a triplex and a sixplex on pretty much, it gets a good street for a four-plex. What was that? I didn't hear.
Let's clarify it right now.
Alderton.
Okay, are we back? Okay, so item twelve would be our next item. It's been deferred, so we're on to item thirteen. Uh, so one Alderton Court. This is an application to construct a new garden suite to alter the existing driveway and to permit the dwelling currently under construction. There are seven variances being requested. Planning is requesting a condition of approval in the event of approval. Transportation also has conditions of approval. Forestry is confusing me. Um, I think they're asking for a deferral or forestry one and two.
I couldn't figure that out either. I said number one or number two, I don't know.
Anyway. Um, let's deal with the deferral first with the applicant, but anyway. Um, Franco Romano? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So.
Panel, Franco Romano, Action Planning 321, make sure.
Franco, before we get into this, what's going on with forestry? Do they want a deferral or or what's what's the story?
Uh, for, so thank you for that question. Um, this, the site is subject of a of a building permit, so there has been a building permit issued and urban forestry has already dealt with the site, but they've asked for a condition related to a private tree. And then the deferral is regarding a Catalpa tree that's in the city boulevard. Um, and it is well outside of the area of construction. Uh, they're asking for more information. I don't know what more information they they would need, but I think the condition related to a city tree permit would be the appropriate course of action here because there's no, that are, the nearest part of the building to that uh city tree is that uh was and is an existing foundation. So there's no new excavation within any T P set.
Okay, so can you, uh, as part of your presentation, just give us a little bit of a background on how we wound up here and why we have the dwelling already under construction and just sort of give us some history and context for that?
Absolutely, yeah. Staff can bring up my uh presentation slides, please. So my my slides are organized such that on uh where where there's a drawing, other than the Laneway Suite, building permit is shown on the left-hand side and the proposal is shown on the right-hand side. All of the variances relating to the house, except for wall height, uh reflected the building permit that was issued in June of twenty twenty-two. And the building permit was for, um, I'm gonna call it a top-up, but the the former house did have a partial second floor. So the the building permit was for a a top-up and um there was basically no building footprint changes. So the existing conditions relating to the east sideyard setback and east is on the left-hand side of this for, because the architect has north facing down. So zero point nine seven is an existing condition, the nineteen point zero five meter building length is an existing condition, so is the building depth. The driveway width is actually existing as well under the building permit. So all of the variances relating to the house uh exist. The zoning examination though, and there have been three different zone examiners since this building permit was initially submitted. Uh, the zoning examination though has now been changed, reclassified from a building addition to a new house. And that is the reason why there are five variances related to the dwelling. And all of those dwelling conditions exist. And I'll just speak, um, I guess for pre-existing. So the house is under construction. It's just, um, if if staff can flip to the next page, please, slide number two. It's just a foundation that's in that's in place. Uh, there was a building code-related uh order to comply, which was to get a a building permit for the new house. And work has stopped, so there hasn't been any work done since that order to comply was was issued. That's, so that's how we got to where we are today. It's not that they were constructing illegally. It's just that the more than fifty percent of the walls came down and therefore it's being reclassified as a as a as a new build.
Okay, but you. So the original permit did not include a garden suite. That's being, that's gonna be a separate permit now then?
Correct. The the, so the the owners are in for the new house permit and and then there will be an additional permit request for the garden suite. And staff can go back to the slide number one, please. So the garden suite at the upper uh right-hand side has two variances. One is for the the separation distance to the detached house of three point three meters. Perfect. Thanks for zooming in on there. So the three point three meters is not actually a direct interface. You'll see that the three point three meters goes from a garden suite to the open front yard in front of the house. And then it's four point five seven meters to where the house and the garden suite would have an interface rather than the five meters. And the sideyard setback, or I guess the the rear yard setback is one point five two meters at the top instead of two meters. And those variances are are minor in nature and there'd be basically an imperceptible difference if if it was, if it were compliant. But the the fact that the garden suite has a has a a layout to facilitate a living space, et cetera, uh, those two very, two small variances assist greatly in terms of the building footprint. And this is a corner lot, so we've been mindful of the setback to Alderton Court, which is on the right-hand side of this sheet. But there is, the boulevard actually here is over six meters in in width. But there is no, there used to be a setback, the initial application that was in front of a differently constituted committee back in May of twenty twenty-four, had a setback variance to the boulevard, but that's been eliminated. So I submit that that the uh the variance request is is minor in nature. Happy to have urban forestry conditions one and two. Planning staff are asking to tie the uh the approval to the site plan. And transportation, we've already uh submitted to transportation that the utility pole is over four meters away from the driveway. But happy to have those conditions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any further questions? No? Okay, uh, no other speakers?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, but there's just one name to just join. I'm just gonna ask them if they're here for this one. Sorry, I'm trying to unmute him. It's not working.
Could have muted himself.
So this is regarding Abdur Chatney. I'm trying to unmute you, just don't press anything. Seems I can unmute him. Um, if you can just quit, shoot me an email, um, use our general boxes, tell us what item you're here for. Um, I don't have you registered.
Okay, thank you. We'll wait two minutes and see if we get a response, otherwise we move forward. Okay. Okay. Thanks. So let's take it into committee. Um, if anyone's, if any discussion or anyone's ready for a motion? So. Number of variances related to the existing, the house currently under construction and proposal for a new garden suite. We have no objectors listed that we know of.
Chair, you looking for motion?
Yeah.
Oh, Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. Chair, in my view, the variances that are being requested are appropriate. I believe they do meet the four tests. I prepare to move approval of the variances being requested subject to the planning report of July the 12th with respect to conditions relating to site plan and also urban forestry conditions one and two.
There's transportation conditions as well.
I think that was covered off in the, he actually submitted, it was in our additional materials. He submitted an updated site plan showing the utility pole distance to the driveway. I think that's what.
Yeah, he did, but they've asked for the conditions, so it shouldn't be any problem to waive it.
Okay.
I don't have a problem, including the development engineering condition.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. On favor? Okay, unanimous approval. Thank you, Franco. So item 14 has been deferred. So we're on to item 15. This is 11 Greystone Gardens. It is an application to obtain consent to sever the lot into two undersized residential lots. Forestry is requesting conditions two and three in the event of approval. The consent would result in. They're also requesting the construction of a detached dwelling with an attached garage in each of the two severed lots, both of which would require six variances each. And. 15. Joe Dome is the agent.
133 Torresdale Avenue, agent for the owner.
Thank you, Joe. Since this is a consent, I think we're going to need a bit of a presentation.
Of course. The purpose of the application is to sever the lot into two residential 7.62 meter frontage lots with 435 square meters of lot area each. A new two-story detached dwelling with an attached garage is proposed on each lot. We feel that the proposal allows for adding reasonable gentle density within an eclectic context. And for a little background, the application was deferred from the previous hearing to allow for more discussions with planning staff as well as neighbors, and the proposed dwellings have been revised as follows. So both dwelling lengths have been reduced from 17.5 meters to 17 meters and also moved a couple of inches forward, but no front yard setback variance is required. And this is to comply with the bylaw and address the adjacent neighbors' request from number nine and 15 Greystone Gardens. I should note that planning staff did not previously have an issue with any of the proposed variances, including the prior 17.5 meter length, but it was reduced anyway in good faith with the neighbors. Also, on both proposed dwellings, small rear yard second floor balconies were removed to increase neighbor privacy, and also the portion of the rear yard canopies that were previously shown to extend over the rear basement walkouts have been removed to meet the bylaw for side yard setback on the west side for 11A and for the east side of 11B. And this further mitigates the impact to both adjacent neighbors at nine and 15 Greystone Gardens. And to speak to the proposed frontages, after a number of discussions with planning staff, they are now reviewing the application in the context of the geographic neighborhood to include both the residential detached and the residential semi-detached zones on Greystone Gardens, which is a more complete picture of the immediate context. And they have outlined that the immediate block character does not have one consistent prevailing lot size and configuration, and the proposed lots would be consistent with the existing character of the street. And so planning is now supportive of the application as per the latest staff report, and they do not have any objections to the proposed frontages areas or minor variances. And I'll note that the owners have also been pleased with their conversations with the neighbors, as there are now six form letters in support on file from number two Greystone Gardens, which was received in the last few days, as well as submitted form letters from seven, number seven, nine, number nine, which is the adjacent neighbor, number 12, 25, and 31 Greystone Gardens, and we are not aware of neighbor opposition at this time.
I don't see that.
The owners have attended the hearing in person, have put so much of their care into this application. I'm sure committee can appreciate the difficulty in many cases for neighbor support for these types of applications, and I believe that does help speak to the proposal being a good fit within the character of the area. Back to the frontages, if you could bring up the area map from the attached cover letter. That's right. So the west side of Islington Avenue in this area is characterized by a diverse mix of detached and semi-detached dwellings and numerous townhouse developments to the east, south, and southwest, and employment zones further to the west and south. The semi-detached zone on Greystone Gardens, which allows 18-meter frontages split for semis, begins just 100 meters away from the subject property, and the townhouse developments on Lobo Muse, for example, are located 150 meters southwest. The townhouse development at the corner of Islington and Bering Avenue, which is the next street south, is located 100 meters southeast. And another townhouse development is located just south of that one on the next street at the northwest corner of Chauncey and Islington, 180 meters away from the subject property. And this location effectively serves as a transitional buffer zone between the more stable residential detached dwellings on the east side of Islington Avenue and the surrounding employment uses. And I've reviewed 297 residential detached lots within the bounds of Islington to the west, Bluer Street West and Fieldway Road to the north and Chauncey Avenue and the employment zones to the south and west. 154, approximately 52% of the residential detached lots in this area have a frontage less than 13.5 meters, and 50.5% have a frontage below 13.5 meters and lot areas below 510 square meters. And to break it down further, 34 of these lots, or 11.5%, have frontages below 10 meters and lot areas below 450 square meters. So this is just for the residential detached lots, and if the semi-detached and townhouses are included, it would speak to the fact that there isn't a consistent lot fabric in the immediate and surrounding context. So the proposal represents a reasonable and context-appropriate infill project complementing the existing.
I'm going to get you to wrap up, and I've got a few questions for you.
Sure, sure. And there are also nearby examples of severed lots with similar frontages as shown as on pages three to six of the cover letter, and these include 211 Bering Street, the next street south.
Okay, I'm going to cut you off, and that's one of my questions anyway, is some immediate context to the size of those lots. So can you provide those? You're saying it's on page six of your cover letter?
Yes, so if you scroll down a little bit, it should be shown there, 211 Bering Avenue. So those are severed into three lots of 8.13 meters.
Those are townhouses, are they not?
No, those are each detached.
Those are detached, okay. And what's the size of the lot there?
And the size of the lot is 315.4 square meters each.
Sorry, the frontage?
The frontage is 8.13.
So it's a little bit more than what you're proposing?
A little bit more, but there are other examples that do have the exact same frontage, such as.
Can you show us some of those examples?
Yeah, so just the next example down, you can see 16A and 16B Chauncey Avenue, so that's two streets south. That is the exact same frontage was approved for 7.62 meters for two detached dwellings, and there are other examples scrolling down further as well, for, I think, three separate examples of 7.62 meters frontages. 9A and 9B Chauncey with also an identical lot area, lot areas for these lots as well. 7.62 meters and 435.2 square meters, and 10A and 10B Chauncey as well, 7.62 meters.
Okay, and you mentioned some support letters. We have no support letters.
They're on the public file. Most of them.
What was the date of submission?
So they were submitted prior to the previous hearing, but they, I'm not sure why they're not showing up on, I mean, they're here on screen.
Okay, so they're in the previous hearing.
The last, the last one we received just a couple of days ago, so we submitted that onto the late file from two Greystone Gardens. But the remainder, that was, if I can just quickly go over the list here, that's number nine, number seven, number 12, 25, and 31.
Okay, any questions from panel members? No? Is there anyone else to speak to this?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. No. Yeah, I mean, these are good semi lots, but, okay, so let's take it into committee for discussion. So essentially, for comparables, you've provided two other comparables in the area, which aren't necessarily immediate context. You don't have anything else on that street that's at 7.6 or smaller, is there?
On the street, there are, in the semi-zone, there are lots that are.
Right, so those are semis, but as a detached dwelling with a 6.2, there's no examples? Sort of 7.2.
Sorry, 7.62, yes. So not in that immediate block of, on the west, on the east side of Greystone Gardens, which is approximately 22 lots. So there aren't examples within that range, and that was in the bounds of what we were talking about with planning for a while. And, but we feel that the surrounding context, just broadening out just a little bit, really emphasizes that there really isn't that consistent lot pattern. And if you consider the other examples nearby and the neighbor's support, we feel that does speak to.
So bottom, but bottom line is you have two other examples in the broader neighborhood?
Sorry, there are a number, there's a few, there's about three or four in the document. If you scroll from pages three to six, those are the examples listed. So there was 211 Bering. Yeah, starting at 211 Bering, the next street south.
Again, I'm asking for 7.6 or less. 211 Bering does not fit that criteria.
Oh, understood, yes. But I would note, in those cases, the lot areas are substantially smaller than what's proposed here, so that I believe those were 315, 315 square meters as opposed to 435 for the application.
From the streets, you don't see that.
I understand. I just felt that that was relevant with the variances for frontage and area, but there are the examples of, on Chauncey for the exact same frontages. So the 7.62, 9A and B, 10A and B 16 as well. And there also are four lots at 3A Chauncey. There's four detached lots that do range in the seven meter, seven, up to 7.9, but two of them are less, have less frontage than what's proposed.
Okay. Thanks. Nothing on Greystone. Anybody else for questions? No? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, anyone ready for a motion, or do you want to talk about it?
Well, we're certainly setting a precedent.
Well, that's my concern. It's also the narrowness of the setbacks to each other, where you wind up with 1.2 between the two. If someone puts a fence down the middle, you've got unusable space.
That's the internal 1.2.
Correct.
And there is a semi in that block, and I'm just wondering why.
Well, I think these are great lots for.
For semis.
For semis, yeah.
But not two detached dwellings?
Well, I just wanted to note that it appears that the applicant has been working with city staff because they have been able to move them off their earlier memo recommending refusal, and now they seem to be supportive of the, so clearly the goalpost has been changed and they crossed it. Staff are.
Staff are, staff are, but then we need to as well.
Yeah, well, I just want to put that in.
Yeah. Yeah, and.
Are staff happy? Are staff really happy?
Are they ever? Yeah, I mean, when you look at a street view, yes, you've got that kind of lot pattern on Bering. I don't think you have that on Greystone.
No, you know, a lot of, but you do have a lot of semis on Greystone. Even in that block, there.
Yeah, and I think this would be a great proposal for two semis, but there seems to be a better market for the for the standalone houses that are squished together.
Than the, than the two places.
Semis.
Well. Is someone ready for a motion?
That's what I'm looking for. I mean, we're having some discussion, which I think is helpful.
I'll make one. I don't know what's going to happen to it, but. I do believe the application is a good one, and with that, I'd like to move a motion for approval subject to the forestry and planning conditions.
And I guess the usual consent conditions?
Absolutely.
Okay. Is there a second for Bill's motion?
Second.
Seconded by, okay. All in favor? Okay.
We do have a July 24 ECS memo on file. Is that still in play? If they have one condition.
I thought it was on. There is an ECS memo from July 2024 with one condition. That's still in play or throw that into the mix, too? I am to include the July 10, 2024 ECS memo with their condition, July 27, 25 planning, and July 20, or July 17, 2025 forestry conditions.
I second that as well.
Dominic, you're still, you're good with that, okay? Okay, so back, so we've got ECS, forestry two and three, and planning. Okay? All in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, so that passes on a three to two split vote. Okay. Item 16. 619 Oxford Street. It's an application to construct a second-story front platform and a new deck in the rear yard. There are three variances being requested. I don't believe there are any conditions being requested. And Aida Evangelista. Good afternoon.
Aida, you're unmuted. Can you hear us?
My apologies. I didn't realize I was muted. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members. Aida Evangelista on behalf of the owners of 619 Oxford Street.
Good afternoon.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, perfect.
So I don't think we need a full presentation. Maybe just give us a bit of an overview. And I have a question. Has the platform already been built?
Yes, so this was a bungalow with a veranda. Yes, so this, this was a bungalow with a veranda in the front. And what they did was they built a second story over the existing footprint of the home. There was, they built a canopy, they have two small children, so they built a flat portion over the front veranda. And then subsequently, they put a railing, just for safety reasons, and just for aesthetic, aesthetic purpose, just to give it some articulation in the front of the house. So yes, Mr. Chair, it is there. The veranda was always there, they just built that canopy over the veranda. And that's why, so, and also just to, to why we're, why we're asking for that six-meter front yard setback, it was always six meters, the difference is, prior, the front veranda was open, and now there's some areas where they, they would like to enclose it, because they do have two small children, it just gives them a sheltered area because of the area that it's in, it just gives them a sheltered area, there's like a wind tunnel there, and it just gives them a sheltered area where they can put the strollers and the children's toys and, and get out of the elements. So nothing's changed of the footprint, other than the fact that they've just, that flat roof portion turned it into a balcony.
Okay. There's no other speakers for this item?
No, there's none.
Okay, any questions from panel members? No? Okay, let's take it into committee then.
Chair, I'm going to move approval to authorize the three variances. I believe what's being requested will not impact anyone i- in a negative way. I believe that does meet the fortress under the planning act, move approval with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Golly.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. All in favor? Unanimous approval, thank you, Aida.
Thank you very much, have yourself a great day and great weekend.
Thank you, you too.
Okay.
Okay, item seventeen, forty-three Old Oak Road. This is an application to construct a second-story addition above the existing dwelling, a two-story north-side addition, and a new garden suite along the west side of the property. The altered main dwelling will be a duplex. There are nine variances being requested. Forestry is requesting condition two in the event of approval. We have on file an arborist report, we have metro links with advisory comments, and we have a revision that variance one for the FSI will no longer be required due to zoning bylaw changes, or building code, zoning changes, sorry. Jonathan, you're back on.
Good afternoon, committee, good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon, I think we're going to need a full presentation on this.
Yeah, absolutely, so as you did mention, variance number one for the GFA has been removed, it's no longer applicable, as this is a property with under three units, and the Oreg two ninety-nine has eliminated that. If we could bring up my presentation material, please, and while we're doing that, I will go over the, the outcome of the deferral. The deferral was, sorry, excuse me, Mr. Chair and committee, the deferral was, was twofold. One was at the request of urban forestry to obtain a permit. If you look on the right side of the picture, you can kind of see a dead tree right there. For the removal of that tree, to obtain a permit prior to coming back, that has been done. Urban forestry has issued the permit to remove that unhealthy tree. Now, if we could go to page two, please. On page two, I've just, I've just provided a quick chart of what changed from the, the original... Sorry, this is also subject to a refusal application previously last year. So I had provided a quick chart, just showing what has been removed and what has been unchanged. Essentially, the crux of it is, the variances for the dwelling itself have all remained, except for the GFA request, which has been removed. And in terms of the garden suite, all the variances for the garden suite have been removed, except for the west side yard setback, which remains as per the saying. I would also note that at the previous hearing, and I also believe today, that neighbor has not had any concerns with that setback proposed. If we could go to page two, please. I quickly want to run through the variance requests. There are two side yard setback variance requests, if we could just zoom in on that area right there. So in terms of the variance request for the side yards, both of them are just for those small green pinch points that I've identified there, because the house is on an angle, it's, it's sitting actually perpendicular to the rear lot line, not the front lot line, so it's just those two pinch points there that are identified in green that have the request for the reduction of the side yard setbacks. If we continue on to the next page, please. The request for the building length maintains what is there today. So the building length and the building depth is not changing. What, what we're doing is, again, adding a second floor on top of this. Why this triggers the variance is we are altering through an addition to bring the building closer to Old Oak. Because we are doing that, it triggers the variance in addition to putting the second floor on. But again, as I previously showed on the, on the screen before, it is just for that small, small pinch point there that we're requesting that side yard setback reduction, which actually doesn't correlate to the extended portion, which is on the left side of the screen. It's actually the recessed portion that's on the right side of the screen. If we can go to the next screen, please. So the, I'd like to now just review the platform size variance for the front porch. What we see here, again, is the addition. The reason we have this is, rather than underpinning, which is very costly, the owner would like to essentially just raise the existing first floor, which pushes the platform up. I would like to note that although the variance is for one point nine eight meters, remember, that is taken from the average of the side yard setbacks of the adjacent properties. In actual fact, if you look on the right side of the screen, the platform in real life, as you see it, as you would experience it from Old Oak, is only one point three five meters above that grade, as we can see there. So again, because of where it's taken, it actually is interpreting it as being higher, but in reality, it's at one point three five meters. I, I did read some of the material that the neighbor put in. I, they are incorrect in the interpretation of the Oreg in terms of parking. What, what the Oreg is saying is, the zoning bylaw will trump it if it's, if it's more, more, more permissive, meaning it doesn't require any parking. Further to that, we are not removing any parking with the proposal that is there today. That would be a variance in itself if we were actually removing parking, but the actual introduction of the duplex of the garden suite does not require any additional spaces. Also, in terms of the platform variance, that platform variance is also triggered, again, by the functional first floor being considered the second floor, so there is no balconies proposed on the actual upper level of the dwelling. I think that's, that's it, Mr. Chair and committee, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions before we move to other speakers? No, okay. So we've got Guy Crocker in person, come on up.
There we are. Guy Crocker, I'm at sixty-six Old Oak Road, directly across from the applicant. I'm actually here to voice, I guess, my opinion, and we don't know how to put it, because part of this, part of this, this thing going on here right now is the addition of a second floor, which, you know, I really don't have a leg to stand on. Quite frankly, there's been a lot of additions in the, in the neighborhood, so that's, it's great. Couple of things, though, that I, I would like to point out, and the applicant's representative is very good, very good talker. As far as, I guess, things that have been taken off, actually, if we can go down one screen, yeah, right there, I, I think this is all because of the change in regulations, hence, the variations do not have to be put in, is that correct?
For the gross floor area, that's the only thing that's come out because of the change.
Right, okay. No, no, it just, it's, it kind of looks like the garden suite is, is off the table all of a sudden, but obviously, it's not. If you, arborist report...
There's been, it's more permissive around garden suites as well, so some of this, some of the variances that have been removed are due to change in legislation, not change in drawings.
Correct, and quite frankly, a couple of the variances that the, that was put on for the main house area, I, I'm scratching my head at, because they're already there, so I don't know why there's a variance. Anyways, yeah, so next screen, please. Thank you. Question. This was put in, and, and, and the representative will be able to respond to this. If you can, I don't know how far you can zoom in on the, I guess, the left-hand side where the garden suite is, you'll see a little red lettering in there? Perfect. Now, just for my own sake, does this mean the garden suite is not on the table now? Or does it mean the garden suite needs a second full permit just for the garden suite?
Second building permit.
All right, I'm just, I'm just checking, because that, that label is not on all the plans. So, little, kind of, kind of strange there. Yes, so the objection is, not necessarily to the second story. The objection partially would be, this was going to turn into a triplex, not a duplex. The, the original plans that were submitted, there are still online, show a nanny suite in the basement. If it was me doing it, I'd have it all wired for a full kitchen. But anyways, it does say nanny suite, so therefore, it's being submitted as a duplex, it will turn into a triplex. Given parking, which of course is not really relevant anymore, you can't park on the street, that's illegal and toxic. The main objection is the garden suite, it's just going to add too much of square footage to the, I guess, to the area, too many buildings, as it were, plus the extra whoever's going to be living there. Where, do they have vehicles, yes or no, it doesn't matter, there's a bike, a bike path that's, that's part of the plans. And so really, that's, that's pretty much it. As far as the neighbors, I've gone to no less than ten of them, including the two neighbors adjacent to the property. The one that representative just stated didn't really have an issue. The gentleman unfortunately is elderly, I don't really think he understands after talking to him. He did say he didn't have any issues, but I don't think he fully understood. Concept of a two-story building, not a little garden suite, a two-story building that's going in, it's going to be about eight hundred, just over eight hundred square feet in total. That's a problem that we have. I just want to say thank you very much, Chairman, et cetera, you've changed since the last time. This is round three for us here. The arborist report, I really, it's already turned into a tree day, so I'll, I'll leave that one alone. Other than that, that's it, the objection is just strictly for the garden suite.
Okay, so just to summarize, your issues are any of the variances related to the garden suite? Because we can't reject the garden suite that is a use that's permitted now.
No, I, I understand that, my objection is to the garden suite. And by the way, one other quick thing, it does state on that presentation that the, and this is, I guess, a play on words, and my time is up, I understand that. Building length and depth, so it's probably the second last, if you scroll down there. It does state that the existing building length and depth will remain the same. Is that the original, the way it sits right now?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, then, because plans haven't changed. There is still a bump out coming out the front, according to plans.
Basically, the current building is not zoning compliant, and because he's gone back, it's getting caught now.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, I'm just, just pointing out that it's just kind of strange it's there, but nothing else is proving it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No, okay. Sean Sanford?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and panel members, I appreciate the opportunity to, to address all of you. I did submit documentation, I don't need it brought up, I'm gonna, I'm just going to speak to the, the issues that I have, which I think are expansive to what Mr. Crocker has just shared. So a couple of things, and, and one, I want to point to the Ontario Act of our governing additional dwelling units, which clearly says you can have two additional living spaces within your house as long as there's only one additional living space in any other building on the property. You can have a total of three living spaces within your house, but only if there is no living spaces in other buildings on the property. I would submit that even though we're terming it a nanny suite by evidence of the fact that there are three separate entrances into this building that is being proposed, that it is a separate living space, and therefore not three, therefore four living spaces in total, and not...
Which actually would be permitted under Toronto zoning bylaw anyway.
I under, thank you. I understand that that applies to all areas, but not necessarily our area, but I will defer to the committee's expertise there. The second one, which I know has not been, that we've said is not an issue, but echo Guy's concerns, under Ontario Reg, and if we're pointing to Ontario Reg, just to be consistent, item two in that Ontario Reg does point to the fact that individual parking has to be provided for each living unit, unless that it complies with a major, major transit station area, which this doesn't fall into, or transit supportive area. Extremely concerned about the density that this is going to create on the street, which is always, already extremely narrow, similar to Mr. Crocker, however, if we were just similar, just talking about the expansion of the main dwelling, I wouldn't be too concerned. Our main concern is the garden suite, and the fact that there will be potentially four units in this space, and what that means for the neighborhood going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from committee members? Okay. I'll bring it, are there any other speakers?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so let's come back to Mr. Binkowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you committee, and thank you to the neighbors. Actually, please leave this up there. The, the first speaker spoke of my presentation, this is actually what's on the AIC, which doesn't say not a part of this permit, that was just a part of my presentation material, it was separated into different drawings. But, but, Mr. Chair, you are correct, the garden suite actually does need a separate permit, and that's, and that's just the nature of it. Now, when we spoke of parking, what I would, would address that with, the Oreg, I, I just believe there's a little bit of confusion by the neighbor with the Oreg as it relates to parking. The Oreg specifically says, unless a zoning bylaw is passed under section thirty-four, which it has been by the City of Toronto, which does not require parking, so that actually supersedes all of it. And again, I, I would notice that these, I would also note that these are reviewed by a zoning notice, not through a zoning waiver, yeah, which, which has been confirmed by the city. I, I really didn't hear any, any impact issues raised by the neighbors, really, other than parking. They, they, the building depth, like we said, and building length, and really the two pinch points of the side yard setback, again, will not impact anybody across the street. Again, the only impact that could be felt by anybody would be the individual with the one point five meter side yard setback, and, and this is now the third time we are here. They've had three opportunities to come, they've had three opportunities to write a letter of objection. They have not, and, and, and I believe it was Mr. Crawford's honesty, he actually said the individual told them they have no objection to it. Lastly, this does have a large boulevard that will be able to accommodate large cars. If you look at the screen here, you can see the dotted line for the driveway is quite expansive, so it's actually larger and wider than the actual garage itself. So the sufficiency of parking cars, in my opinion, I don't think would be an issue. I'm happy to answer any questions the committee might have.
Go ahead, Laura.
No, so the, the applicant is right, we have not heard from the neighbor that would be mostly affected, the neighbor from the west side, and that's correct, right? We've not had a letter from them? That's correct? We've not had a letter of complaint, they've never appeared here bef, so this, he would be the most affected by this application.
Okay, can we just clarify with the driveway on the site plan again? Yeah, so we're, I, I just want Jonathan to show us the driveway, where that is on here.
Yeah, if you could zoom in, please. If we look at the left side where it says the existing driveway,
The left side. The left side.
Maybe, maybe kind of just move a little bit up, yeah, you see the dotted line, how it actually extends out almost perpendicular to the house where we see the, the benchmark of one, two, three point eight three? That's, so the driveway is actually wider than the garage itself. And if you actually go into my presentation material, Mr. Chair, it would also be evident from the first picture on the first page. There you go, if we zoom in there.
So that's not changing?
That's not changing, that's exactly as it is today.
Okay.
I was merely pointing out that although you could put one car in the, in the garage, one car behind it, you can actually fit a car next to the, to the, next to the garage parking spot, as you can see on the screen right now.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, I was just trying to find that on the site plan, it wasn't that clear, okay.
The norm, Mr. Chair, again, is to kind of terminate all your stuff at the property boundary rather than extending it.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Yeah.
Of course, okay, got it, thank you. Okay, any questions for the applicant or any of the presenters? No, okay, so let's take it into committee. Oops. Any, go ahead.
Yeah, so with that, I'd like to move a motion for approval as I do believe the application meets the four tests and that be the application as amended, subject to the July twenty, or seventeen twenty twenty-five forestry condition.
Okay, so we're down to eight variances. Moved by Mr. Dalton, is there a second or?
I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you, Laura, all in favor? That's unanimous approval, okay, thank you, Jonathan, thank you to the neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you, so that was our last item on the agenda, another motion?
I move that the committee of adjustment for today is adjourned at one oh four PM.
Okay, thank you, Laura. It's a nice weight. Thank you, everyone, thank you to staff.